Councilor Walton?
Hello.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tim Wong.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lynn. We have a call.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll begin tonight with public input. If you wish to speak on any matter, feel free to fill out one of these yellow forms that you can get through the glass doors in the back and fill it out and then pass it over to Clark Beck, and you'll have five minutes to speak on any issue that you wish. And we will begin with Karen Norbeck.
So let's me first. Good evening, Karen Norbeck, 800 East Geneseo. I have a few topics to speak about tonight. The first one is regarding La Luna. Thank you for supporting this community in Lafayette. I am over the moon that you are helping them to become the owners of their mobile home park. Secondly, a thought about the transportation plan. It seems fitting to give a shout out to Councilor Walton. I can't count how many times since early on in her time on council, I have heard or say a version of the following comments. Do we have a transportation plan? Can we create a transportation plan? This is where a transportation plan would be useful, and when are we going to create that transportation plan? I'm glad it was finished before she left council, and I am pretty sure that we wouldn't have one if it was not for her. Thirdly, looking at the plan for the introduction of city administrator candidates, I am wondering if it's possible to flip the days for the meet and greet and the interviews. From a community perspective, we've been in the dark about this for months. The first opportunity we were given is a meet and greet. We will have had no chance to see them speak and share their background or give us a sense of who they are. If the interviews were conducted first and the meet and greet the day after, which I believe we did when Rick Sprague was the candidate, it would give the public at least a glimpse of each person before any meet and greet happens. Finally, tonight you will be looking at the applicants who have come forward to apply to fill Councilor Briggs' seat. I hope you'll be thoughtful as you look at the applications. I would hope that you think about her family, friends, and supporters as you decide who to interview. I'll get right to the point here. I don't think an applicant who used only 24 words, no capitalization or punctuation in their application should even be considered. The lack of respect shown by Eric Ryan for the reason this seat is open is astonishing, disappointing, and frankly disturbing, especially coming from someone running for the council in this year's election. Councilor Briggs and the community deserve better. I know what she would have thought if she saw this application to fill any of your seats if they had become vacant. Please choose wisely with Tonnet in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Vicki Eulen.
Hi there, Vicki Eulen, 303 West Simpson Street. I wanted to talk about public input for both the council vacancy and the city administrator position. I appreciate all the opportunities that you've given for public input for both of them. In terms of the council candidates, in the past, we have asked the public to provide questions for the interviews for the candidates, and I think that there's still time to do that logistically. If tomorrow the city were to publish the list of candidates to be interviewed, the date, time, and place for the interviews, and then a form to sending questions for council to consider. If there were an end of the day deadline on Friday, for example, then that would give you all time to review the questions before the Monday interviews. There can be a disclaimer that the council will select, choose, select questions to ask so you don't end up having to ask everything. And also in the past, I believe all the questions were published on the city website but without people's names. And I thought that was really cool because you got a sense of what was important to people and what they were looking for. Also regarding the opportunity for public input after the interviews but before council votes, how is that going to be done? How can people who are not physically in the room participate other than calling in as they would during public comment? What I suggest is taking an hour break between the interviews and the debate about the candidates, the debate among you guys, and soliciting public input any way we can. Email, text, phone, so as to give people as many ways as communicating with you as possible. So I realize there's logistics involved in this, so, but it would only be for an hour. So is it possible that maybe a staff person could handle that? Or something, just something that gives people, gives you as much opportunity for public input as possible. In terms of the applicants, I agree with the excellent letter in your packet that mentioned that people who are running for council and applying for the vacancy, that they should not be considered for the same thing, and I tend to agree for that. I feel like it's sort of hedging their bets, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate, even if it may be legal. For city administrator selection, I talked to Councilor Sampson about this last week, and Karen mentioned it as well, the meet and greet. In the past, as Karen said, we had the interviews, we had something to talk about to the candidates at the meet and greet. And I think, I know that there, Councilor Sampson mentioned that maybe they could make a statement or something at the beginning, but I think it needs to be not just like who they are and why they should have the job or something. I think it needs to be something kind of more specific to give people fodder for what to talk to these people about. And as an example, I'm going to talk about like when the planning director job came up for the city, and I thought the process was so good. The candidates made a short video about themselves and their vision for the city and whatever. And then they answered a question about what they would do from a planning standpoint with the land parcels at 120th and baseline. And the answers were so good, like one of the candidates like didn't know how that land was zoned or what jurisdiction it was in, and so that made that really office. Jeff Brazel, I'm just going to give you a little shout out. Excellent answer. You totally got a sense of what his vision was, what, just from this one little question. And I don't think that a council, you know, a question like that, we need a question that's specific for the candidates. But I do have some ideas, which I'm going to email to you because hopefully some finalists are watching this meeting, and I don't want to give anybody a leg up, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Thomas Wood.
Members of the council, I wish to apologize. I do not have an elaborate speech prepared. I'm going to have to wing this as best as I can. First, I'd like to wish JD and Tim the best of luck in tomorrow's polling. You guys' careers are kind of like in the balance right here, and so whatever the outcome is, I wish you nothing but success in that area. I'm here representing the community of La Luna. As a year ago, we thought we were going to be out on the streets, and if it wasn't for the effort of many people, a lot of them right in front of me right now, we might be on that street, so I want to thank you all for all the hard work that you have done to help us with this and for the county of Boulder as well. With that said, I can only say thank you guys very much for all that you've done so far.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any more yellow forms. Are there any other members of the public in person that wish to speak? And can IT please promote me to a panelist for the call, for the Zoom call? Thank you. Okay, and I'm not seeing any callers online either, so we will close public input. And just for, so council is aware and for the public as well, our city attorney is online with us tonight, so she's, she is here and available for questions via Zoom. And she's at, she'll be at home tonight. Okay, so we'll move forward in our agenda. This is our consent agenda. We have item A on October, we have the item A, October 17, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, October 23, 2023 City Council Workshop Summary. Item C, Second Renewal Ordinance Number 20, Series 2023, Consideration of the Multimodal Transportation Plan. Item D, Resolution Number 2023-62, According to the First Amendment to the 2019 Interstate Government Agreement Fifteen to the City of Lafayette and Boulder County Regarding Financing for Construction of South Boulder Road and 120th Street Winding and Multimodal Improvement Project. Item E, Resolution Number 2023-64, Interstate Government Agreement Correspondent Program. Item F, this is a series of special meetings. Item G, this is a change order for number one, Brandon Construction On Call Utility Repair Services. Item H, Change Order for Creative Construction by Design LLC, Colorado One, On Call Contract Replacement Repair. And then item I, Change Order Number One, Camira Water Solutions Inc., Polyaluminum Chloride, PACS 18 Purchase Order Agreement. All right, so council like to pull any items?
I'd like to pull item F.
Okay, we have item F. Any other items? Now we'll take a motion to approve the balance.
And move to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. So we have item F, Councilor Sampson.
So I'm going to jump F two, and mainly I wanted to pull this to make this public, publicized even more, that there currently is a special meeting called at 5:00 PM next Wednesday, November 15. This is specifically to, for the public to meet the finalists for the city administrator position. And that is happening at Indian Peaks Golf Course Clubhouse, again, 5:00 PM next Wednesday, November 15. Do I need, I was going to do the same thing for three.
Yeah, no, go ahead. But we'll wait for the.
I just didn't know if anybody, based on public comment, if anybody needed to make any.
Yeah, so I guess I'll jump in there. So the, in terms of the golf course clubhouse, so here's sort of the format of it. We'd love to, so it begins at 5:00 PM. We'll have, we'll make sure that we issue very publicly, you know, all this information so folks are aware. This will be open to both council, staff, and the public, and it'll be a chance for you to visit and chat with some of our finalists for the city council position on a more personal level. What we'll do is we'll also have a formal introduction of those candidates so that they can share a little bit about themselves. And then I will see if it's possible, after chatting with council, to see if we can at least get more information out there about the candidates, which could possibly be through a written format. We did receive as council packets with all the information about the finalists, and I know city staff will be receiving copies as well. And we'll see what we can make public and what we can't, depending on conversations with our, with our city attorney. But we'll try to do everything we can in our power to make sure that the public feels prepared and has a good understanding about these candidates before they meet with them. And so I just want to let you all know that we, we're aware of those concerns, and we're working to, to make sure that as much information is out there as possible.
And then on Thursday evening, November 16, we are calling a special meeting at 4:00 PM specifically for the council to interview the city administrator candidates, and that, that is going to happen one at a time. Each candidate will interview, and then the next person will come in. Again, 4:00 PM, Thursday, November 16 for that. That will be televised. It is, it is a public meeting, so people are invited to come on in and listen in personally on that. Is there an opportunity, based on the public comment, to take in any questions? Mayor, on the, on the.
I think that was for the city council vacancy, but.
Okay.
Well, I know we can still talk about that though, so. So, so the, for the candidate interviews.
Is there an opportunity for anybody to submit maybe a question, a, a proposed question that council would ask each candidate? And I don't know if that's, if we have the capacity to do that or not.
So I believe our consulting firm, SGR, sent council a, a, a sort of question bank of about 20-plus questions that I had sent out to council, and then it's sort of on us to collectively decide.
Okay.
With those questions, which ones we will narrow it down to, maybe eight or 10. So unfortunately, so council will be selecting the questions that will be announced during that time. However, there will be multiple opportunities for, for councils to receive input from the public through feedback forms and through direct contact with the council. We're going to come up with as many ways as we can. So we will know exactly, because we don't want to hire someone that the public doesn't like, of course, right? So we are gonna, we're gonna make sure we still take your opinion into account for sure.
And speaking of that, doesn't that, I would propose if we, and I believe this is what we're planning to do, is we're going to take public comment from that night, so next Thursday, all the way through to the 21st. Is that correct?
And that is where we can have a conversation right now. So I will turn it over to Councilor Walton to provide some thoughts on the process, or the timeline.
So before I ask my question on process and the timeline, I wanted to ask when, when is, I don't remember seeing a deadline, and whether you wanted feedback from us on those interview questions?
So the interview will take place on the 16th. Let's say by this Friday, Friday the 10th. So that's enough time to get it over to SGR.
Okay. So I wanted to find out more about exactly what the process is between the interviews as we complete them on the 16th, and then understanding kind of the, the process of the negotiations when we have executive sessions, when we're, when we're meeting with the consultants again. I had specifically asked about, you know, what the length of the negotiation process is, and then sort of concerned that if we don't deliberate that night on the 16th, that we, we lose those five days if we waited until the 21st. I'm concerned that that might not give our negotiators time enough to do what they need to do, but also if there's any follow-up that we may want as council that comes out during that three-day process that we would, we wouldn't have. I just want to maximize, I guess, those number of days. So I first was curious to hear from the city attorney what, what time period we should plan, I guess, for that, for that negotiation period. If she's got any thoughts on that. And.
So that's the question, right?
Yeah. So, so right now, we have the plan for on November, Thursday, November 16. That's when we'll interview the candidates live. It will be open to the public, and that'll be a formal interview that evening. And so the question that, and right now, and this, this is a council decision, is are we going to meet in executive session following that interview, following those interviews on the 16th to decide, or not necessarily decide, but to discuss the candidates? Or would we like to give a sort of a buffer period of a few days and decide on the 21st that night? And I guess council.
I kind of have a sub-question too, and that just is, I didn't, I wasn't understanding any of the communication so far. Then when we would have, when the, when the time period for any groups meeting and providing input would, when we would have that information? Because I just remember in, I, I think that we asked SGR, and I remember the last time we did this, that we were able to turn that feedback around pretty quickly and have it kind of in that same, kind of same day, information and feedback, so.
So just looking at the schedule, so the night, Wednesday, the night of the 15th, that is the same night. Candidates will take a tour of the city. They will also, with city staff, that's strictly for city staff. Afterwards, we'll have the golf course reception that's open to everyone. As folks depart the golf course reception, there'll be a feedback form that they can fill out, so SGR will collect those. In addition to those feedback forms, the following morning, the candidates will have panel interviews with the department heads in the city, and each department head will have feedback forms as well. And then council will receive copies of all the public input from the golf course and all of the staff input from the interviews the day of the 16th. And so I think why there may be more advantage to push our, our deliberation to the 21st is so that council has enough time, those few, three, four days, the weekend, to read through all those feedback forms, and then also the public could call us, they can email us, you know, they can tweet at us, whatever, and they can tell us their, their feedback as well. And that way, on the 21st, we feel much more educated on, on what the public and staff's opinion is before we make a decision.
So I guess are we, are we, are we crunching the negotiation period? Are we cutting that short by only doing that the 21st with then the? So I guess we would meet on the 21st, deliberate, make our, give, give the negotiators direction, and then with the intention that we would make an appointment and announce that on the 5th?
That is our intention, correct.
So I guess I'm curious if that's been discussed with SGR, and if, since they're not in attendance tonight, if Mary Lynn has any insight into that.
I do, Mayor. I can provide some, a basic outline of what the process between interviews and appointment would typically look like. SGR would be assisting with that, so I would want to also get their feedback for council on what that process looks like, but I can provide a quick outline of what council should most likely expect. So typically, after the interviews are completed, council would go into deliberation and decide who they would like to direct negotiators, which would be SGR, with the city attorney's office assistants, since I would be responsible for drafting your contract with whomever you appoint, so that, that first step after interviews is for council to deliberate in an executive session and direct, direct SGR and myself to begin negotiating with council's preferred candidate. Then that contract negotiation process would begin, and we would attempt to see if candidate and council would agree to the same terms through that negotiation process. Depending on where candidate comes back on, in response to terms that council is proposing, it may or may not require an additional executive session or two. So just be aware of that. You might need to call a special meeting or maybe on your meeting on the 21st. Just depending on the timing, you might need another meeting to have an executive session to consider any counter proposals or responses that your preferred candidate has. Once the contract terms are to councils and the candidate's satisfaction, at that point, we'd be able to finalize an employment contract, and council would be able to make a formal offer of employment to the preferred candidate. And at that point, that would be when council would schedule the person's appointment for a public meeting along with that offer of employment. So that's generally how the process would play out. Again, SGR would also be involved, although I, I think it would follow the same outline, but happy to answer any questions from council about that.
So are we taking a vote in this?
So, Councilor Walton, would you, are you suggesting that we, suggesting that we not meet on the 21st and rather meet that same night on the 16th to have an initial discussion on the candidates?
Yeah, I think that I'm interested, especially since, you know, we'll have the, we'll have the feedback from, for most. I mean, it's not, it's not a lot of time, but I think, you know, after the public interview piece of it, it would be somewhat limited. But we could, you know, create a process where we're getting some feedback, you know, rather quickly. But I would, I would be interested in doing an executive session that night to discuss the negotiation, deliberate, see if there's any open questions that we have, and maybe we can come to consensus on, on some ranking. I think that that just builds in and kind of pads the, the schedule a little bit. And for, you know, especially given the fact that there's a holiday, we have new council members that will be sworn in shortly after, presumably on the 5th. So that would, that'd be my, that'd be my desire, my proposal.
Okay, so we have Councilor Walton's suggestion of, of hosting an executive session the night of the 16th after the interviews. You know, my recommendation would be to, to hold off on that just so we have more time to hear from staff and the public and wait to the 21st to have a discussion. How, this is a council decision, so we'll see what we have a consensus on. What, what does the rest of council feel?
I would like to wait till the 21st because I really want staff input, and I really want public input. And saying that just giving a little bit of time for people, if they would hustle, is not, is not enough to me. I want to give people enough time to reach out to council and provide feedback.
So I was thinking that was one reason why we did the.
I'm sorry.
The meet and greet earlier.
Point of order. I, I believe you had asked everybody, and so maybe we could just have each one speak before you respond.
Okay, we have a point of order, as by Councilor Sampson. So we'll look to see input from the rest of council. How do we feel about these dates?
I personally think that we've come up with a plan, and we've, we've been very nimble in what we've done to date, but I feel like it's getting close to when we need to make a decision. So, and the process is coming very close, that we stay the course that we've already charted.
Councilor Brice?
Just point of clarification. So, Councilor Wong, your thing, you want to, you want to, what, stay in the course means?
Oh, the 21st.
I guess I'm not, I, I want to hear a little bit more about what would happen on the 16th, what, Councilor Walton, what you're suggesting would happen on the 16th that couldn't happen on the 21st. I know padding the schedule, having some preliminary deliberation, what would that, would that give us?
I guess it would be an opportunity to meet while, while the interview process, the conversations we've had are fresh in our mind. It would give us an opportunity to meet with our recruiter while we know, A, he's available, and B, he's here in person. It would give us an opportunity to perhaps make a decision on who we would like to extend an offer to, maybe even have a second, third, fourth rank, fifth, sixth, however many finalists we rank those, and then that provides some direction to negotiators to start the conversations. It's possible that we would have a situation where, you know, candidates might change their mind after going through the process too, and so this is a, you know, it's a conversation with the candidates, and I guess I would rather have the opportunity to begin those conversations sooner rather than later. If on the 16th, we have an executive committee and. than later. If on the sixteenth, um, we have an executive committee and we meet and we add more questions, or we get some feedback that we want to follow up with, it also gives us those five days to make a plan to perhaps have another round of interviews or another, you know, add something to the process without, um, without risking, you know, our, our intention of trying to complete this process before, um, December fifth. And, uh, and I think the in-person conversation of, uh, because I don't see that in any, I don't see that anything in our process, we ever are meeting as a council in an executive session with our recruiter while the candidates are here to, um, to, to discuss that negotiation period. So if it doesn't even happen until the twenty-first and there are questions that come up, then we lose the opportunity. Um, but, you know, that could, that can burn a few days too. Um, so.
Thank you. So what do you, what do you think councillor Barnes?
Uh, I am a little concerned about something not going quite as we, as we hope it will. And then on the twenty-first, I don't know if we have time during that week.
Yeah, so there you go.
Thank you.
Back, back. So, I mean, except that we're losing, so if we do wait a couple of days, the eighteenth and nineteenth, those are the weekends, so I don't think, uh, SGR will be working out those weekends. They might be, but we're just losing the seventeenth and the twentieth, that's it. And I don't know if those two days are going to be the make or break in a negotiation.
We also meet on the twenty-seventh, if you're looking at that calendar.
We have a schedule.
I'm looking at that calendar.
You've got a busy month.
Yeah, next week we have a meeting.
I mean, one thing I'm hearing just on the feedback piece of it too, I, I don't know that, can we just call them? I guess I have a question about the feedback.
Yep.
What, um, how will the feedback be collected, um, after, um, our, after we adjourn on the sixteenth from staff and the public?
Uh, I think, I don't know the exact process, but SGR will collect it and then deliver it to us. I'll confirm with Larry tomorrow. I'll also confirm with him that he's available for the twenty-first to meet with us in person.
So if he's not available?
If, then he'll be available online, but regardless, he, he'll, he should be available. I mean, we'll, 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 uh, make sure of it.
Okay.
So, so that week, the week of the twenty-seventh through the first might be the week of, is the week of negotiation?
Uh, it could be, I mean, I know it's Thanksgiving week, but it could be the twenty-second, it could be the, that, all the way up until the December fifth, it's two weeks, two weeks of negotiations. However, there is a holiday during that time. Councillor Walton, what are your thoughts?
I think holding off to the twenty-first is a better idea. The sixteen just feels like, um, it's too much even for us, I think, to decide that night. Um, and again, like, for staff and the public to have enough time to, um, give their feedback, it's just, it's later in the evening when we're having the interviews and then making a decision that night, there's like no room at all for public to, um, give their feedback on what they think. And for us as a council, I think it's a really pressuring decision to have to make it that night, um, like a couple, an hour or two later after we just had the interviews. So, um, I think we should hold off to the twenty-first.
Okay. So I am hearing consensus, but what I can tell you councillor Walton is we will work with SGR and have them make sure that they are aware of that December fifth date. And when it comes to the negotiations, to try to get all the, all the, all the little, you know, uh, the back and forth done throughout that, as quickly as possible, so that we're ready by the fifth. Okay, um, the last thing I'll mention on, in regards to item F, is that there will be a dinner on the night of the, on the twelve, uh, I apologize, on the night of the fourteenth. That's a Tuesday. That is publicly noticed. However, um, the, the format of the dinner will be e, uh, each councillor having, meeting with each candidate and rotating. Um, it is publicly noticed, so you can come, but a majority of the time, I mean, I would say all of the time the candidates are going to be meeting with members of council, uh, but there will be four of us, um, there at least. Uh, that's why it's publicly noticed. You can crash the party if you want. Okay, um, so that's item F. Do we have a motion on item F?
Do you want, do you want me to make them individually?
You can do it all, all under item F.
Okay. I move to approve all the special meetings, Tuesday, six P M., November fourteenth. Motion to call a special meeting Wednesday, November fifteenth at five P M. And motion to call a special meeting Thursday, November sixteenth at four P M.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Because I just want to clarify, so we are not meeting as a council at all with our recruiter, um, wa, during this period that he's going to be in here in town, the fourteenth through the sixteenth?
Uh, we will see him, uh, as a council formally meeting with him, no, but we're gonna, we're planning to do that on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Um, but we will have, uh, you know, several interactions with him, because he'll be at all the events, and he'll be, he'll be coordinating all of it.
Okay.
And he'll be here when we're interviewing the candidates.
Yep. And that's a good time to ask him any questions as well about the process. All right, uh, so we do have a motion in second, um, uh, to approve item F. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Oh, I was going to say the names of the four finalists. No, okay, whatever. All right.
When is that going to be announced?
It has to be announced tonight.
I'll do it during council comments.
According.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it tonight. Uh, okay, um, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with our presentations. Uh, tonight, we, so we have item J. This is the introduction to the twenty-twenty-four Lafayette Urban Renewal Authority budget. And so we have our, our fabulous director of economic development, Bridget Keating, here, and I believe she's be kicking off the presentation.
Great, thank you, council. Um, I'm excited to be introducing the twenty-twenty-four Lafayette Urban Renewal Budget. Um, a quick agenda, I'm just gonna highlight some, uh, key things about Lura, then jump into the twenty-twenty-four budget process, go over the budget, both revenue, expenses, talk about some key initiatives, and then open it up for a discussion and feedback. Um, one thing to note is that, uh, tonight, I'm looking for feedback from council on the budget. You don't formally approve it, so this is an opportunity for you to give me any thoughts that you have, and I'll bring it back to the full Lura board. So you are all familiar with Lura, but it serves as the lead public enti, entity to effect the revitalization and redevelopment of the Old Town and South Boulder Road. Um, just two key dates here. On the, on one end, we were established in nineteen ninety-nin, nineteen ninety-nine, and on the other end, our tax increment financing is set to expire October of next year, which is something that we thought about when crafting this budget. Um, with all the work that urban renewal does, it needs to tie back to our blight conditions. And so this is just a list of the blight conditions found in nineteen ninety-nine, and we always want to make sure that we're reflecting on those in the work that we do. Um, we'll still see things in Old Town that fall under these categories, um, such as lack of pedestrian facilities, there could be site problems with parking problems around tight alleys. And so we always like to reflect on what is our purview and our mission with these blighted conditions. At the same time, all the work that we do, we want to make sure that it, um, achieves our urban renewal go, goals, which is within our plan, um, prevent conditions of blight, prevent physical and economic deterioration. One, two that I think are super important is that we want to attract capital investment in the downtown, but we, with, with Old Town, small businesses are the heart and soul. So we want to insist with the retention, expansion of those existing businesses, and then also preserve that unique Old Town character of downtown. Our comprehensive plan talks a lot about making sure that we have preservation with our existing buildings when necessary, and so we do that a lot with our work with urban renewal. So, switching over to the twenty-twenty-four budget process, um, as I mentioned, tonight I'm looking for feedback from council, but we started this, uh, a couple of months ago with Lura. In September, we talked about our projected sales tax revenue. I introduced the budget to them last month in October. Um, and then once I received that feedback, I'll be consolidating it, putting together a final recommended budget and presenting that to Lura, November fourteenth through a public hearing. With our budget, um, we like to really think of this comprehensively, where we have our projected revenue from tax increment financing, which I'll go into, and then expenses as far as what do we want to accomplish in those goals. So, uh, going into the revenue side, um, as you know, urban renewal is funded through tax increment financing, and so that is both property tax and sales tax. And it's kind of a nuance to put this together, because we need to project what we think is going to be happening. Um, for property tax, we're looking at over eight-hundred-thousand dollars, and this is based off of the property tax for twenty-twenty-three, and then increased by eighteen percent based on preliminary assessed values per Boulder County assessor. So that makes up basically half of our budget. Uh, the other half is sales tax, and, um, we're looking at getting over nine-hundred thousand for this. So for the sales tax for next year, um, we, I worked very closely with our chief financial officer to think about how Old Town is doing. We're doing fairly well, um, better than the overall city with sales tax. And so, um, we looked at what we received in twenty-twenty-two, we increased it by four percent for projected growth this year, and then increased it again four percent for twenty-twenty-four. Um, the last thing that we did is we reduced it though, because our tax increment financing is ending in October of next year. So we looked at the average of what we've collected from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, um, and reduced that down. So overall, we're looking at getting one-point-eight million in projected revenue. Um, a, a thing just to remember is that when our TIF expires, next, uh, in twenty-twenty-five, that one-point-eight will be, um, put back into the dedicated sources. So that won't be reinvested back in urban renewal, the sales tax, um, will go back to general fund and any other dedicated funds it's related to. So, switching over to expenses, um, when putting together our expenses, it's also, it, it's important to think about the urban renewal plan, but also, um, just what our priorities are. If you remember, we had a board retreat with Lura in twenty-twenty-one where we thought about successes, lessons learned, and what were some outstanding areas that we wanted to focus on for the remaining years. And we looked at catalytic projects that were small, medium, and large, so we could equitably do work throughout the district. Once we had that board retreat, which was, um, very great, productive, and successful, we went to council in October of twenty-twenty-one to make sure that we were on the right track, and we got great feedback that, that these were the, um, priorities that we should be focusing on. We then did public outreach in November of twenty-twenty-one and got good feedback from the public, and so that really gave us a good basis as far as what we should be putting our efforts into. Just some, uh, since it was a couple of years ago, some, uh, key takeaways from that public input. We heard that we need to continue investments in the public realm with facade and streetscape improvements, looking to activate vacant lots. There is a desire for more green space and gathering space, so we are really looking to work with private property owners when they're doing projects in parting with Lura, that there is a, a public aspect of it. Um, a really important one is to support the Old Town artistic character, whether that is with the funky streetscape furniture or, um, improvements, always thinking about how we can integrate art into it. And then some top priority projects were the seven-hundred block, two-ten North Public Road, which is the old St. Clair Gas Station, and then replacing the street tree planters on Public Road. So before I jump into the budget expenses and some of those projects, I just wanted to send some reminders that, um, this budget doesn't grant staff or Lura the ability to spend those funds, it's a budget. So it allows us to have the funds available, and funds can only be spent through the city's purchasing policy or through Lura-approved motions. So while these are goals that we hope to achieve, they may or may not happen, and we need to decide that once a project actually comes forward to Lura. Um, also, we try to really think about, things pop up throughout the year that we're not thinking of. A private property owner may decide that he wants to, he or she wants to do an investment, and so we work with them, um, throughout the year without knowing during the budget process. And so we have buckets reserved for different types of projects that align with our goals. And not every initiative, um, will include a financial contribution. Um, I do a lot of work in Old Town, and so my salary alone helps achieve some of these goals. So this is a great graphic as far as where we're looking to spend our money for, um, twenty-twenty-four. You can see that, uh, the big categories, as far as, uh, a lot of what we do our work in, is downtown development. This is facade improvements, grants, economic development agreements. Streetscape has to do with, um, any sort of capital improvements related to sidewalks or street furniture. Um, professional services is related to if we get consultants to help with designing something or maybe doing a financial analysis. And then you kind of see that we also have some smaller buckets. Uh, we have funding available to purchase public art, and then also repairs and maintenance. We manage a lot of, um, parking lots in Old Town through public-private parking lot agreements, and so we provide maintenance, uh, throughout the year for that, especially snow removal, which takes up a lot of time. So for key initiatives, um, I just wanted to highlight a, a couple things that we're excited about. Um, and I did them in a, a little different categories, and I'll, I'll jump into a few of them. But, um, for marketing, as you all know, we have a dedicated marketing consultant that just promotes Old Town through our website and Facebook and, uh, Instagram, and it's a great resource that, uh, is free for our businesses to work with, so we're continuing that. Um, we have funding available to do, uh, a new refresh of all of our wayfinding, not just thinking of it as where are the parking signs, but how do we have maybe kiosks or maps or lighting or art or paint that helps move people throughout the district. Um, and then another one to highlight is the baseline road multimodal design. We do have funding available to, um, do a, a multi-use path or maybe even new sidewalks on baseline. It's something that I've talked to you all about previously. Um, we haven't moved forward with it yet, because baseline is also where they're looking at bus rapid transit, and it's a C dot right-of-way, but we have funding available and hope that we can push that project forward for next year. Um, also, as you all heard earlier, street trees replacement was something that was big from the public, and I'm excited that, uh, we went out to bid for that, and we're looking to award a contract that council will see in upcoming meetings, so that is underway. Um, and Lura will be the funding partner for that. So Public Works will ma, manage that project, and then, uh, Lura will be funding it. So you can see to the left, some of those holdover street tree planters, and to the right is the new design that is already out there, and we're just looking to, uh, fix the remaining ones. Some other, uh, key initiatives is we have a facade improvement program that has been really successful, and it's been great to see so many businesses, uh, tap into that. And then also, um, we have funding available for those projects that pop up, pop off throughout the year. Um, a good example is that we worked with Greg On Spa to help with his, uh, expansion this past year, and that was a project that came up, and we had the funds available, because we were looking to partner with individuals with certain projects similar to that. And then lastly, the other thing that we have in this budget is, um, funding set aside if we want to set up a new, uh, potential district. And so as you know, we're doing the Old Town Tomorrow project. We're thinking about, do we need a new special district? We have funding available, so we can dedicate that to the new district if it gets set up, so they don't have to wait a couple of years to get the, um, let's say if it's a TIF, to get the base, um, the increment above the base. So we have funding, so they can hit the ground running as well. So I know that was a lot, but some of the key takeaways is that we're looking at getting , uh, one-point-eight million in revenue, and we are being really, uh, ambitious next year of, uh, having a budget that allows us to spend four-point-three million. And, and another thing to highlight is we'll still have fund balance after that, so one-point-three million. Um, as you all know, when urban renewal, our TIF expires, Lura doesn't necessarily expire, it just means that we don't collect any new revenue, so we can spend on these funds. So as a reminder, I am here to seek feedback from council on this budget or ask, or answer any questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Mangan.
All right, yeah. Well, thank you so much for putting that presentation together for us. Uh, questions from council? Uh, councillor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, three questions. Number one, when we start to ensure that there's more art, when Lura looks at more art in there, and I, I see there's one percent in the budget for public art purchases, it shows the money to add more art coming out of that, out of the
Yep.
It's coming out of the public art.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Um, a great example is the art piece that is to the, if you're staring at On Spa Jewelry to the left, um, that's next to Ghost Box. That was a public art piece that Lura just purchased this past year. So what we tend to do is work with arts and cultural resources of what the art on the street, and then, uh, they give us a suggestion as far as this was a piece that we'd really like to see in the downtown, and we find this, a place for it, and Lura pays for it. and we find a place for it and Laura pays for it. So it's a great program.
Thank you. The second question was, the wayfinding additions, are they just on Public Road? Or would they extend down some of the feeders?
Definitely extend down some of the feeders. And it honestly could even extend out of the district. A good wayfinding system brings you, if you notice, when you are driving towards, away from the hospitals and you're turning onto Public, there is an Old Town sign that says, turn here. And so we want to think about not just wayfinding when you're a pedestrian, but also a regional visitor as well. But I'm really excited about that project because so often I hear people say, I didn't know that there was a bookstore on Harrison. And so we want to make sure that we can bring people throughout the district, both if they're on car or bicycling or on foot.
So an example of wayfinding that would be added is not just a sign that's on a post, right?
Right.
What other kinds of?
A great example of what we have right now is if you notice, we just have parking signs. And then we have a couple of Old Town signs throughout. A good example is maybe we have a painted crosswalk that says, you know, historic East Simpson this way. Or art that looks like an era that says, discover more over here. And just, I think that we have such a creative district, so I really want to, you know, leave it on to our respondents to think of creative ways to move people throughout Old Town.
Last question?
Yeah.
I know you were on the South Boulder Road Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
And I'm just kind of stunned at the differences between what South Boulder Road and Boulder looks like versus Boulder, Boulder County versus Louisville. And then it comes right up to Public Road, I think, what they're talking about. So what does, does Laura's, does Laura go all the way down to public, I'm sorry, South Boulder Road?
So we have, in two thousand and two, the South Boulder Road Urban Renewal District was added. And so it includes like two swaths of area, basically where the district is, and then also where Flatiron Church is. And so we have close to a million dollars that we want to invest in that district. And we're looking to do that with the property owners there as far as, how do we look at the parking if it's being utilized well? Is there opportunities to add different pad sites? But there's a lot of planning efforts happening. And so one of the reasons why I'm excited about that corridor study that you're mentioning is that we can get some good inspiration as far as where investments need to happen. Laura also is looking to partner with a city planning staff to do a sub-area plan in that area. We're still evaluating if that makes sense internally. But there definitely needs to be a more holistic vision as far as South Boulder Road. And there's a few things happening that I hope that Laura can tap into and either fund completely or be the matching grant for.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions from council? Okay, I'm not seeing anything else from you.
No.
All right, so we appreciate the putting together that presentation. It looks like you have council support.
Thank you.
Okay, next presentation, we have the two thousand and twenty-four Mental Health and Human Services Grant Program Funding Recommendations. This has been a long time coming from council, and we're really excited to see what, some of the recommendations.
Yes, I'm excited as well. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'll begin this presentation with a brief background of work to date since staff last came to council in May to seek direction about the program. I'll then jump right into some overview of the applications and the review process that we used to get to this point, highlight the funding recommendations from the advisory committee, pause for discussion about those recommendations, and then outline some next steps. So if you'll recall, back in May, staff came to city council to seek direction on three items. The first was whether to join this existing funders collaborative with Boulder County, the City of Boulder, and the City of Longmont. The second was regarding program eligibility, and the third was to get direction on whether or not to create an advisory committee to help review these applications and make recommendations. Council agreed to join the funders collaborative and establish the advisory committee. So by July, we had recruited and the city administrator had appointed members to that advisory committee. And immediately, they went into meetings to help establish some of the evaluation criteria, which were included in your packet this evening. And also in July, the grant application opened. So again, that was the shared application with the funders collaborative. And that was open through September, closed the middle of September. And then the committee and staff went right into reviewing those applications. So between September and October, the committee reviewed the applications, scored them, met a few times to make recommendations, and now we're here this evening to go over those recommendations. So the city for this program had six hundred fifty thousand dollars available in funding and received just over a million dollars in funding requests. And those requests came from forty-two separate applications. And the requests for funding ranged dramatically from two thousand dollars all the way to two hundred thousand dollars. As I mentioned, both the advisory committee and staff reviewed the applications and scored them using the criteria. Staff looked more at the organizational practices, looking at some of the financial information, the stability of their leadership and board, while the advisory committee was tasked with looking at how the program their, the organization was seeking funding for aligned with the needs of Lafayette residents and met those needs through their program layout. Of the forty-two applications, the advisory committee is recommending funding for twenty-four of the requests. They're listed here on the screen with more information in your packet. And in lieu of going through all of them individually, I did just want to highlight a few of the requests that were some larger dollar amounts, but also really spoke to the kind of core intent of this program. So the first program I wanted to highlight as a recommendation was for Clinica Family Health. And the advisory committee is recommending an award of one hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to support their services for medical, mental health, and dental health care for uninsured Lafayette residents, as well as some case management services for patients or residents who make sense for those services. And when combining all the services provided in those buckets, Clinica anticipates being able to provide over seven thousand services with the funds requested. The second is community food share, and the advisory committee is recommending an award of fifty thousand dollars to support their food distribution efforts for both food banks and no-cost grocery delivery to older adults. And another part of community food share's model is to help partner with and coordinate care and resources among other nonprofits serving the same residents. The next program is through Mental Health Partners, and the advisory committee is recommending an award of forty thousand dollars to support their mental health clinical assessments, behavioral outreach for patients following hospital discharge, and then also mental health case management services. The next program highlight is for supporting victims of domestic violence. So this is for SPAN, our Safe House Progressive Alliance for Nonviolence. And the committee is recommending an award of thirty-five thousand dollars to support a variety of services ranging from crisis intervention, safety planning, safe shelter, counseling, legal support, transition planning, as well as the general crisis hotline and domestic violence prevention outreach. And then the last program I wanted to highlight was with Sister Carmen Community Center. As you're all aware, they're a large and trusted partner within the community. And the advisory committee is recommending an award of one hundred seventy thousand dollars to support their family resource center, which is a large award, but their family resource center really covers almost every service area outlined in the program, ranging from a food bank, rental assistance, utility assistance, navigation services, as well as their family development program to help increase self-sufficiency. So I'll pause there, turn it over to the mayor for a discussion and really seek information from council as to whether council agrees with the recommendations or would like to amend them as presented.
All right, yeah, thank you so much. So we do have those recommendations presented in our packets here. We also have a few which are bold. Those are the ones that could potentially need a reduction. And if so, you know, what do we do with the remaining amount? So first, actually, let's just focus on questions right now from council to see if they have any for staff. Councilor Walton?
Thank you. Thank you for the work. Can you remind me on the advisory board, is that a group of people that are elected for, or I mean, appointed for multiple years?
Yeah, it was initially a two-year appointment through next December.
That's what I thought. Thought we wanted to try to get some traction and, you know, some experience, especially since this was the first year. And did you ever encounter that there were any conflicts of the, for those who were on the advisory board that were making decisions, and were you able to manage any of that?
Yeah, there were certainly instances of discrepancies across the scores, but they were generally able to either come to an agreement or the discrepancy, even though there was a discrepancy, the scores didn't rise high enough to get to a point where they would even recommend funding. But where there were discrepancies, we worked closely. There were a couple of organizations, they had some questions about programmatically, about how they would manage and provide services. And so typically, through getting those responses from the organization, it kind of helped get rid of any of those discrepancies.
Were there any members on the advisory board that had a conflict of interest or involved in any of these groups and had to recuse themselves?
No.
Are there any restrictions on these, get these grants as we provide the funding that would be strictly used for residents of Lafayette?
Yes, we're working through an agreement template right now with our city attorney. And I believe that is a stipulation that the funds are used to provide services for Lafayette residents.
And can you also remind me what the reporting requirements will be after their awards are received and money spent?
Yeah, we're also working through this right now, and it's currently in draft form. But the general framework we have in mind is to do sort of a mid-year report, see how they're doing, how they're, because if they apply for these funds as early as July of this year, wouldn't get them until as early as January next year or December of this year. And then, so the idea is to have a mid-year report, kind of a progress report, check in, see if you're still able to provide the services as presented, meet the goals that you identified. And then if yes, then issue the second round, kind of cut the funding in half. So do the funding for the first year, first half of the year, do the progress report, and then have a year-end, more detailed report about expenditures and progress and demographics served.
Okay, and who will be reviewing those reports?
That is yet to be determined. I'm sure it'll be a few staff, likely, and myself, maybe someone on finance to review the expenditures.
And I would say probably the committee as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Not seeing any questions, so we can get into a discussion about the award amounts and suggestions on those. Are we okay with staff recommendations? Once again, there are a few highlighted with, with a potential reduction, reduction of support. We can keep them as they are. So if we, question for you, I guess, if we keep the bold ones as they are, that'll still, that's still under our cap, right?
Definitely. Yeah, yeah, so let me explain here. So everything here totaled is six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Those with an asterisk, I was highlighting to say that the advisory committee is recommending a reduction. So for example, a precious child.
Versus what they asked for.
Yeah, a precious child, that five thousand dollars is a reduction from what they requested. And anything that's bold, it's just what I highlighted in the following slides.
It's a reduction from what they requested.
Correct.
Now, okay, that, sorry, that confused me. Gotcha. Okay. Thoughts on the recommendation? Are we moving forward with these? Or does council have any disagreements? Councilor Simpson seems like she's okay with it.
Just a quick question, and we are looking that these funds do serve Lafayette residents, correct?
Yes.
Just want to clarify again. I'm good.
Councilor Walton?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you. I've served on the Little Lafayette Committee for four years and definitely, you know, have seen the evolution to where we are today. I really appreciate the voters supporting the ballot initiative so that we do have more funds. And I'm really a proponent of restricting the funds and restricting these grants, so I'm glad I'll be focused to go on to Lafayette residents. I do want to recognize that that is, that creates an extra amount of burden for data collection on those that are, will be, you know, for these nonprofits and these organizations receiving the money. But it's important, I think, that we be good stewards of the money and support Lafayette residents. I want to recognize that not all of these, all of these organizations have offices or office hours in Lafayette. But I do recognize that in addition to the tax support that Lafayette residents pay to the county and that the county distributes to these too, that, you know, they, they are, they are oftentimes supporting a broader, more regional group of people that, that it's important and also, you know, maybe impacting guests and business owners or employees that work here in Lafayette through those programs as well. But I'm really, I feel really proud about that we've gotten to this point, and I look forward to seeing how the, how the program continues to evolve.
All right, so council, okay with our recommendations before us? Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question about mental health. What their county mental health nurse? Yeah, I just wanted to see one more time how. Oh, so they, fourteen hundred people serve. Now would be fourteen hundred cases in Lafayette over what time period would you say?
A one-year time period, right? Twelve months, so January through December.
And it's fourteen hundred services, so there might be some people receiving multiple services. So I don't know that, I wouldn't want to commit to fourteen hundred residents specifically, but fourteen hundred services.
That's kind of what I was wondering. How do those numbers look like? Okay, so one person did receive multiple services.
Correct.
Wow, that's, 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 that's great. Okay, I just wanted to see that broken out. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't think there's any objections to the recommendations. So you can go ahead and pass that along to the committee and move forward with those contributions. And so we are expecting representatives from each of these organizations to attend our, I think, our next meeting, correct?
We're going to be inviting them, yes.
Great, yeah, let's go ahead and invite them. So when we deliver that award, we can get a chance to meet some of the folks and hear from them a little bit as well.
Yep, definitely. So, yes, at your next meeting, we'll have a formal resolution to actually adopt these amounts, and we will invite the awardees to attend that event and then can likely begin dispersing funds as early as mid-December, once the agreements are completed. And then I know it's sort of been said by council, but I also want to personally thank members of the advisory committee for their time, dedication, and interest in serving on this committee and helping Lafayette residents. This was a very large lift, many hours spent in this room and even many more reading grant applications at home. So I really, really, really want to thank the members of the committee. This was, they laid a really good foundation for this program moving forward.
That's great.
I'm grateful.
Yeah, their time and their heart.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much, Alex, for bringing that together. All right, so that wraps up the presentations portion of our agenda, and we can move forward with regular business. I will begin with item L, Resolution number twenty-two three dash sixty-five, a loan agreement between La Luna Cooperative and the City of Lafayette pertaining to the Mountain View Mobile Home Park acquisition.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a good description of the agenda item before us. So we're presenting some details on a loan agreement between the city and the La Luna Cooperative. And Resolution number twenty-two three dash sixty-five is the action that council needs to take tonight to approve the loan agreement in its form and allow the city attorney and city administrator to execute the loan agreements. Just some background information. The Mountain View Mobile Home Park is located within the Old Town neighborhood. It's located at the southwest corner of Burlington Avenue and Cleveland Street. It's a little under six acres in size and contains thirty-four homes. The Oder provided the community the notice of intent to sell in September of last year. Since then, the residents have formed the La Luna Cooperative in order to offer a bid to purchase the property from the property owner and purchase the park. Council did approve a letter of commitment last December to contribute four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars towards the purchase price of the park. That letter of commitment contained about five terms, and these terms have been satisfied or will be satisfied tonight upon approval of the loan agreement. The first term was that city council has to appropriate the loan funds. That will be presented in the next agenda item for council consideration. That's the residents had to form their cooperative and then enter into an agreement with Thistle Rock with help for, help with the purchase of the property that has occurred. And then the other three conditions are being addressed with tonight's actions. So execution of a mutually agreeable loan agreement with the city, execution of a promissory note in support of a deed of trust, and then the term that absent a default in the, in the conditions of the loan, the loan will be forgivable. So the only thing that was kind of, we missed the target a bit, was the letter of commitment, anticipated completion of the purchase of the park by November first of this year. The, the actual process to buy the park is just taking a little bit longer, but the intent at this point is to close on the park early next year. With regards to the loan agreement summary, a copy of the loan agreement was included in the staff report, but it is providing four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars to be used solely for the acquisition of the park by the cooperative. It is a ninety-nine-year term loan. Interest will accrue at three percent for thirty years, and at that time, it will stop accruing. And the loan is forgivable at ninety-nine years, assuming there's no default or no transfer of the property. No payments are required, so this makes it like a grant, even though we call it a loan. The payments aren't required unless a transfer event or default occurs. A transfer event is if the cooperative chooses to sell the property to somebody other than a nonprofit or affordable housing provider that is not approved by the city. So this ensures that if the property is sold, it's generally maintained as an affordable mobile home park. The, the loan agreement anticipates an affordability covenant to be put on the property, and this will require that at least seventy-five that at least seventy-five percent of the households have an income of a hundred percent AMI or less, and twenty percent have an income of eighty percent AMI or less, and that's key to the Boulder County area median income. These terms kind of mirror the terms that the state and their primary lender are, are requesting for the property. So the state with Prop 123, anticipated a mobile home park acquisition program where the AMIs were tied to a hundred percent of area median income. And so that's what we're trying to key it, and we're trying to be consistent with the other, the other partners in this, this acquisition. The loan will be in equal position with Boulder County's loan. Boulder County is still working through their process, but they are anticipating contributing a million dollars to this, to this acquisition. And we've worked closely with the county to ensure that our loan terms are identical to their loan terms and that we're in equal position. We will be subordinate to the main lender of the property, which is Rock Capital, and we'll be subordinate to the Department of Local Affairs, which they're considering a, a grant or a low-cost loan to help the residents acquire the property as well. That is my presentation. Glad to answer any questions of council?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I know we've had a few discussions on this topic, but are there any questions from council? Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any questions, so we have a recommendation before us. Who would like to make a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 2023-65, approving a loan agreement between LaLuna Community Cooperative and the City of Lafayette pertaining to the Mountain View Home Mobile Home Park Acquisition.
Second.
There's a motion second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, congratulations, folks. In doubt, we'll be in touch soon with the city. Well, thank you. All right, we are going to move forward with item M. This is first reading of ordinance number 21, series 2023. This is our year-end supplemental budget appropriation. And we have our finance and accounting manager, Morgan, with us today. So we're ready when you are.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As mentioned, I am here to present the 2023 year-end budget supplemental. As a reminder, budget supplementals are amendments to originally approved budget as financial conditions and budget conditions change. A budget supplemental being presented tonight is the third for the 2023 budget and includes both revenue and expenditures, both one-time in nature. The first supplemental for the 23 budget mainly included carryforward requests from the prior year budget, and the second supplemental was very targeted, mainly consisting of the South Boulder Road settlement and the aerial fire apparatus. As you recall, there were a total of five supplemental requests last year, and we've been working hard to streamline this process, which is why you have only seen three this year. On this slide, I have several detailed expense requests. These are just some of the notable ones, not everything that's included in the supplemental. So the first request is for $30,000 for the Xeriscap demonstration garden signage. And with this demonstration garden signage, or garden having been installed earlier this year at Fire Station One, this request would add educational signage to help promote best practices in water conservation and bring this demonstration garden fully to completion. The next request is $100,000 for emergency repairs at the Rec Center Pool Complex resulting from a water pipe break in the pump room. Until these repairs are fixed, the majority of the pool facility remains inaccessible. The $310,000 request is as a result of third-party consulting services that were needed to sustain development review as the Public Works Department was working to fill open positions. Third-party consulting was also needed for the development review of the Willoughby Corner project due to its scale and complexity. Potential renovation of the Starkey Building and Theater has been mentioned to council as part of the 2024 budget discussion, and in order to facilitate the feasibility of renovations to these establishments, design work is necessary. Part of the supplemental tonight is a request for $39,220 for design work on the two buildings as the first step in potential renovation discussions. Based on council approval of the resolution this evening, $495,000 is included in this supplemental for a loan agreement between the city and the LaLuna Cooperative. Funding for this request will come from the city's Affordable Housing Fund, which exists within the general fund. Moving on to the Employee Benefit Fund, $403,300 is being requested in order to reconcile budget to actual insurance costs to actual employee benefit selection. A fund of this type is normally seen with a city who is self-insured. The City of Lafayette is not currently self-insured and is not looking to move that way in the future. So in the coming years, the city is planning on applying a direct cost allocation for insurance benefits for each division and fund in place of an employee dedicated fund for benefits. A total between the stormwater and the water utility funds of $1,024,336 is being requested in this supplemental, and that is for South Boulder Road construction management from the OTAC change order that council approved in September. On this next slide, I have details of the transfers that are included in this budget supplemental. The first is a $1,911,516 transfer, and that transfers between the general fund and the capital projects fund. This transfer had already been appropriated and the funding was appropriated in the general fund earlier this year. This is just a transfer request to consolidate the budget with the expenditures in the capital projects fund. And lastly, in transfers, we have a supplemental to request $741,712. That's coming from several funds into the Employee Benefit Fund. And again, this serves to reconcile actual employee insurance selections and experiences for the amounts that were budgeted in this fund. And as mentioned previously, the city is assessing the future benefit of this fund, but the request tonight serves to balance the fund for 2023. On this next slide, I have the net impact by fund, and as you can see, the total expenditures requested are $5.4 million. Accompanying those are revenue of approximately $2.8 million, and that does include transfers. So the net expenditure request of this supplemental is $2.6 million. As you can see, there is an expenditure request of $1.65 million in the general fund that is mainly comprised of three large projects. So that would be the true-up of the Employee Benefit Fund, the loan to LaLuna, as well as the third-party development review utilized by Public Works, as well as some other smaller dollar amount items. Showing on here, the Employee Benefit Fund shows an increase of revenue over expenditures, which serves to balance the fund for 2023 from a sources and uses perspective. And additionally, the higher amounts in the Stormwater and Water Utility Fund can be attributed to the additional construction costs related to South Boulder Road. So that concludes my presentation on the 2023 budget supplemental, and staff recommendation is to approve on first reading ordinance number 21, series 2023 authorizing changes to the 2023 budget. With that, I open it up to any questions you may have.
Of course. Well, thank you so much. Council, questions on this item? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. The development review, I missed, why are we doing that again?
Sure, so there's a couple of different items in that, and it totals 310,000. So there were a couple of engineer positions that were open in Public Works, and during that time, they had been working to fill them. So in between them, the development review doesn't stop, so a third-party consultant was brought in for the development review. And then included in that as well is a third-party consulting service for the design work to help with Willoughby Corner due to the large scale of that project.
Thank you.
Sure.
No, no other questions? Thank you. Any other questions from council? If not, we'll take a recommendation, please. Take a motion, please.
I move. I move to approve on first reading of ordinance number 21, series 2023, authorizing changes to the 2023 budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second for the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to regular business. This is first reading, ordinance number 22, series 2023, amending chapter 25, Animals and Fowl of the Code regarding vicious animal and animal impoundment procedures. We did have a presentation on this at our last meeting as well, and is.
Yeah, Mayor, so we have a presentation ready. It's the exact same one, so we're happy to give that, or if you just want to review kind of the agenda mailings on the phone and can answer any questions, but it seems really straightforward at the October seventeenth.
It's fairly straightforward, however, for the benefit of the public. City Attorney, can you give us a high-level overview on this ordinance?
Can, Mayor. Thank you for asking. So this ordinance does two things. It will make a couple of amendments in chapter 25, which is the city's Animal and Fowl Ordinance. The first thing that it will do is make amendments to a section of a code that has to deal with mandatory sentencing conditions for vicious animal convictions. So the ordinance would actually change the code to provide that the conditions in the relevant section are no longer mandatory, but to give the municipal court judge discretion to decide which conditions are most appropriate to impose, given the facts and circumstances of a particular case. So that was something that was a collaborative effort between our office, the municipal court judge, the city's animal control officers, as well as the city prosecutor. So those were changes that were recommended through that group, and we're essentially taking what is already in the code, which is a number of conditions that would have to be imposed in every case and giving the judge the ability to decide whether to impose all conditions or a subset of those conditions based on the particular circumstances. The second change that the ordinance would make is to amend the animal impoundment hearing procedure. So right now, there are a number of circumstances under which our animal control officers in Lafayette can impound animals for the animal's safety or an animal at large. There's a number of circumstances spelled out in the code. What the code is missing right now, however, is a consistent hearing procedure where an animal owner can request a hearing in front of the municipal court and to provide their own perspective to the court on whether the animal should remain impounded. That, so this ordinance would provide that procedure. Now, to date, those hearings have been allowed. There just hasn't been a codified procedure for those. So this will clarify that for the public and make it much more clear for animal owners who have impounded animals, what they need to do to request a hearing in front of the municipal court. And it also spells out what the municipal court judge would consider at these hearings in making a decision whether to release the animal to the owner or to keep the animal impounded for the safety and well-being of the animal. So essentially, this just puts a procedure in the code so that it's a fully transparent process that owners can take advantage of if they wish to, should they receive notice that they have an impounded animal. I'm happy to answer any questions, council.
Yeah, thank you so much. And as mentioned, we did have a presentation on this yesterday as well. Any questions from council for our city attorney? Or yesterday, I meant at the last meeting. So no, I'm, I'm super supportive of giving our, our municipal judge more discretion on these types of cases. And so if there aren't any questions, we do have a recommendation for, on slide 472.
I move to approve ordinance number 2022, series 2023, on first reading, amending chapter 25, Animals and Fowl of the Code regarding vicious animals and animal impoundment procedures.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, city attorney and to the city staff for putting that together for us. Okay, on to the fun stuff, the controversial stuff, the stuff that I like to talk about. We have the theater renaming decision. And I believe our, our library director, Melissa, is here to give us a little bit of background. Now, this was on our earlier agenda, a few meetings back. So council had the opportunity to look through some of the recommendations from the public. You know, we have had time to look through, and I believe tonight, you know, we're hoping to make a decision on it, but I'll first turn it over to staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, so we will have an overview of the process this evening. You have been provided within your packet more detailed information about the names suggested by members of the community in the nomination process. Some highlights that staff have pulled out, although we have no opinion or recommendation in the matter, and then an opportunity for council to discuss. And I will remind you that in October of 2022, we presented to you the, the outlines of an administrative policy for naming public facilities, and that is what this process has been based on. That process does, or that policy does give council the ultimate authority in naming public facilities. So back in February, council did direct staff to conduct a process to rename the theater that is currently known as the Mary Miller Theater. It is on East Simpson Street. In June, staff launched a Lafayette Listens page seeking public nominations. It was a nomination form. Those nominations were open and received from June 27th through July 23rd. And there were quite a number of recommendations. So there were fifty total. Forty of those were submitted online, ten were in paper forms. They're reflected here on this slide. And your packet does include the justification given by members of the public. Some names did receive multiple recommendations. We'll remind you that the naming policy that I referenced earlier prioritizes names that do the following: so advancing a sense of community and hometown character, heightening awareness of the city's history, celebrating the natural environment, calling attention to points of community pride, and also, and importantly, broadening the representation of underrepresented communities through honoring them with the naming of facilities. Staff are highlighting tonight three names that were recommended that align with those recommendations. First being the Arapaho Theater, acknowledging that the land that the city sits on was previously home of the Arapaho people. Coal Miners Theater, acknowledging Lafayette's coal mining history, and Sugar Beet Studio, which acknowledges the evolution from a mining community to an agricultural community. We are happy to answer any questions you may have about the process and are looking for direction for council's preferred name for this theater.
Yeah, thank you so much. So before we get into discussion, are there any questions for staff? All right, I'm not seeing any questions. So within our packets, you will see a series of recommendations. Obviously, they're highlighted in the presentation as well. So council is aware, probably the highest recommendation was to keep the name of Mary Miller Theater. However, this council did vote to change that name, so I think to honor that vote, we would, we need to shift it in some way. The Arapaho Theater, as well as Lafayette Community Theater, did receive a lot of nominations as well. And of course, staff had a few, I guess, recommendations, three finalists as well. So we can go with one of those, we can go with something that's not on this list. What are, what are council's thoughts? We just need to come to a consensus. Counselor Sampson?
So first of all, I found it interesting, like you said, that Mary Miller Theater was the one that came in with the top number of votes on this survey. And yet, in the past, the reason that we had decided to reconsider this name had to do with the amount of people that continued to ask us to consider it. So I, knowing that Mary Miller gave $3,000 to build this building, and, which is, translate today, well over $100,000, I have this desire on the history part of it to maybe keep her involved in some way, whether it's the Mary building and take out, and by that, I'm saying we take out Miller. So basically, we've got people who do not like the name of Miller, but there's also several people who appreciate and respect that a woman who was not even considered somebody who could vote, who was not even considered somebody who could, who was of value to do that, had gone out and brought in $3,000 to build this and be, put that important work into that building. had gone out and brought in three thousand dollars to build this and be, put that important work into that building. Maybe it either needs to, the Miller part needs to drop, and maybe we keep Mary somehow involved.
There is a recommendation on there, Mary Elizabeth.
I can't see.
Okay, it says Mary Elizabeth Foot Center for the Performing Arts.
I'm okay with the Mary Elizabeth Foot. This has been originally started at First Congregational Church. Then it became a reading room, right?
It was the library.
It was the library. It was also a makeshift hospital. My understanding is movies were, were presented in there at one time. This was some, a resident who told me that. And then, and so now we have it as sort of a general building that just happens to be rented out by a theater. So I'm, I don't know what it's going to be in the future, so I'd like to keep the end of it, building, center, whatever it is, very general. But I am very, I think a Mary Elizabeth Foot would be fine, or any piece, part of that.
All right, so, so Counselor Sampson's looking at Mary Elizabeth Foot Center, something along those lines. How about the rest of this? Counselor Walton.
Can staff, just so we have it fresh on our mind for the context of this conversation, remind us what the future use with the improvement, proposed capital improvements, what the use of the building would be or more into, perhaps?
Yeah, so we're still evaluating that and the cost of it, but the intention is that we want a facility, especially downtown, that could be multifaceted. As Sampson, Counselor Sampson mentioned, right now it is only currently being rented out by a theater company, but we've had requests for birthday parties, small receptions, different art kind of presentations, laser presentations inside of it. So we're really hoping by doing some upgrades to it, if we have the budget for it, we can make it much more of a community facility versus just a specific one, of course, also retaining the ability to be a theater.
And was that incorporated, that was, that was after any of the timeline in terms of the consideration?
Yeah, we've known that it's been an underutilized space, essentially. So yeah, it's not necessarily that one triggered the other. We've been working towards looking at some of our city-owned facilities, similar to the Starky Building as well.
I guess my question is, was there anything suggested in the language during the process that suggested this would be additional uses?
No, I don't believe so.
It's listed, when I looked up the National Historic Register, when we registered for it, it's, it's listed more as a building. It doesn't even, you know, it basically says eighteen ninety-two.
It's registered as the Congregational Church, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, suggestions on the name? Go ahead, Counselor Marjorie.
I really loved the Arapaho, well, I'm open to not naming it theater, like putting it in the name, but I really loved Arapaho and Coal Miners, so between those two. I really loved those. I think the Coal Miners just, I think it's specific to Lafayette's history, and it's pretty, like it says here, significant and a very large part of our history, so I really loved that. And Arapaho was voted. It was pretty, it was submitted a lot of times, and I think that's also a really great name, so I'm open to not naming it theater. I don't know what we could add to make it sound more general, but.
Counselor Barnes.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to where I stood when we came, when this came up initially, that I don't think that we have paid enough recognition to the entire history of the city. And I think Arapaho Building Theater Center, but just having Arapaho on there is, is long overdue. We are bringing in a Arapaho-inspired-themed, designed building under the children riding on grass at the Metronic Art Exhibit. And we do have some art across the city, but I think it's time that we recognize we're on the traditional land of the Arapaho. And this was a, this building was a library. It's registered as a church. It's a theater. It has Mary Miller contributed to it. That, you can't take that away. She, she did to the construction of it. It's been a lot of bits and pieces, right? I, I look at Lafayette becoming more of itself and recognizing the entire history. The land is not, it, it, if, I can't say that I'm not Arapaho, but I would like to say that the land is the traditional land of the Arapaho, and I think that it is, it's, it is important for us to recognize the fact that we have not, we have not significantly recognized that. It's along the lines of the reconciliation, or whatever the bench will be that we bring eventually, to talk about the things we don't talk about. And I, I think this is the one thing we can do to, to, to show that this is an inclusive, diverse city in not stripping away the past of that building. But there's a good reason why we would make this the Arapaho Building Theater Center Complex, whatever it is, to, to bring in those whose voices haven't been recognized yet. And Sugar Beet is another one. I, I really think that it's important for us to recognize the agrarian history and the coal mining history and that transition. So I think Sugar Beet's also a good name, but I, I, I have to uphold the Arapaho name to start out with. And Mary Miller is recognized in multiple places still. I thought it would be great to have the artist come back and look at the mural that's on the side of the library. We've removed the name off of the roundabout. And Miller Street, even though we don't know that is, that was named specifically after Mary Miller, that's still there. It's not as if this, Mary Miller's history is going away. And I think if we do this right, it's a pluralistic way of representing who we are to say, hey, you know what? This is the history. This is where we are. And we are going to move forward, recognizing all the populations. And I'll stop talking, but I, I, I have to say, Arapaho is my choice.
Great, thank you. See, Counselor Walton?
I would be, knowing that the intent is to broaden the use, I like the idea of having something that's a little bit more broad than the word theater in the name. I, I would imagine in the short term, because there's, you know, an existing agreement and that's been the use for a while, that that would remain for a little bit. But I think, you know, the theater company can, can certainly, I think, work around the, a new name without adding theater. I'm interested in recognizing and honoring the naming policy. And so when I look at those five bullet points that the, that the naming policy would focus on, I think that it, I like the idea of the heightening the awareness of the city history. I honor the decision that the council made before removing the Mary Miller name for this particular building. So with all of that in mind, my, my desire would be to go with Arapaho. And include, I, I guess I would hope that as we, as we continue to make these changes, that we, that we incorporate a plaque, communication, interpretive sign, whatever the right word is for a historical marker of sort, to, you know, share the history, the different uses that the building would be, and, you know, honor the importance of, of a gathering space and the intent of the purpose and use of the building today and possibly for future uses.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem?
So of all the choices that we have out there, I think, I think of a couple of things. I think of Arapaho. And I know, looking around, we do have monuments within the city. There's the, there is the monument that is over by the north edge of the city. I, I think of Arapaho Road. I think of what CU did with Cheyenne and Arapaho Hall. Arapaho County, I think, is historically where the Arapaho's actually were on South Platte. So I don't know if, while, yes, this was part of the territory where they actually here, I don't know the history of that, but I would like, I think, for us to recognize kind of the timeframe that the building was built. And at that time, we were really a coal mining community. You know, I think that when you look at some of the other accents within the community that we've had, recognizing coal mines, they're slowly disappearing. For example, the Black Diamond that sits on the Walmart was a nod to the Black Diamond Mine. I don't know if anybody knew that, but that was why that was there. And there was also the Black Diamond on the McDonald's before they remodeled was also in recognition of that. So to continue what may have been changed there, while I see other things within our greater community, I would like to suggest maybe Coal Miner Hall.
Okay.
Kind of.
Versus Coal Miner Doug? Coal Miners Doug?
Just Coal Miners Hall, just to go back to that period of time in which the building was dedicated.
Yeah, so I'm seeing folks in support of Arapaho, a couple of folks supporting Coal Miners. For me, I'd say, you know, it's, I would be supportive of Arapaho. I would be supportive of Coal Miners. You know, you also have to take into recognition the Cheyenne and the Ute as well, other tribes that laid their foundation here. And so it's, I think narrowing down to just Arapaho, I would be supportive of, but I do think it could go beyond that as well. In terms of the theater, I mean, we don't need to name a theater. I just pulled up Methuselah series, you know, we can go with center, we can go with hall, we can go with house, we can go with a few other options, but the actual name, the core of the name, I would be supportive with, with just moving forward with Arapaho in the interest of, of going with something that we can get a majority of council to support.
I can go for Coal Miners. I can switch mine to Coal Miners Hall or building. Well, I, I guess, if this was open space, you'd have my vote for Arapaho. But I think of the Utes, the Arapaho, the Cheyenne, and what, when I look up what they believe in, it's really more of an open space and nature. And I feel like I don't want to confine them to a particular thing. That's, I think, that's why I think the U.S. National Forester, the Arapaho National Forest makes sense.
I also have Roosevelt.
I'm just talking about, when I'm, when I'm thinking about what the beliefs are of national, the tribes and where they, you know, they originated from the Great Lakes and came down here. And then through a treaty, were given different parts and followed the rivers is where they camp. So I mean, I, I find it fascinating what they're doing. I just want to honor what they, what they would have believed, I guess, was my point in this.
Okay.
Well, we at least have narrowed it down to two options now.
Yeah, that's why I will, I wanted to say that.
We have Coal Miners Hall. We have the Arapaho Hall or the Arapaho Center, however we want to phrase it. We need to make a decision between the two. Hopefully, you know, I know I'm okay with either, but I can make a decision if needed between the two. But I do want to hear from others real quick before I do that. Is there any, maybe Counselor Marjorie, you're okay with both? Anyone you're leaning more towards?
Yeah, I think I'll, I'm in support of Arapaho.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm hearing that from Counselor Barnes, Counselor Walton. And for me, you know, I, I would be okay with that as well, Arapaho Hall. The phrasing of it is, is up to you all, or I guess it's up to us. You know, we can go Arapaho Center, Arapaho Hall, Arapaho, whatever. What do you think?
E, no E? Do I call? No E?
That's a good one, right?
I just was wondering. E, no E on Arapaho?
On Arapaho? It's spelled two different ways.
It is.
It has an E or.
History, it has no E. It's Arapaho. It has an O.
Okay.
Just bringing that up for.
I don't really like Hall. It sounds like a cafeteria to me.
So Arapaho Center?
Ooh, Arapaho Center. There we go.
I, I like Center because the word center kind of draws people to it. Like, I feel like we heart centers in Lafayette. I feel like that means coming together.
If you see, if you just see Arapaho Center, would you go there thinking you were gonna, it was gonna be something inside about Arapaho?
And there you bring the next piece, right? So is it an appropriation to use that without acknowledging the history of the Arapaho?
I don't know. I was just seeing like Center, Community Center, like those start to like have a heavier meaning. I guess that's why I was kind of leaning toward Hall or building or something that was like more original.
Are we okay with the Arapaho Center? Any objection to that? That seems like safe, fair, makes sense. It's not confusing. I'm, I'm okay with that, and if, if the rest of council are okay with it, there is going to need to be some recognition of the Arapaho at the site.
Oh.
So. I mean, we can't just take the name and say.
See, and what's the deal with the historic designation? Because this is national. This is, they usually set some standards.
I don't know that any sort of interpretive signage inside would impact the historic designation.
Can we get the recommendation, please? So who feels comfortable, excited, ready to make this merger?
I'll do it. Counselor Barnes.
I move to rename the theater located at three hundred East, East Simpson Street, currently named the Mary Miller Theater, to Arapaho Center.
Arapaho with no E?
With no E, Center. Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we are now past regular business and on to council vacancy matters. Item P, this is a discussion and decision to review applicants for the city council vacancy and to motion to select interviewees, which will take place on a week from today, on November thirteenth. We did, so hopefully council had an opportunity to review through the applications. We did receive ten, and which we, we asked folks a few questions. Now, it is our intent to narrow down the field to select certain candidates to interview in person. We do have, you know, we did have two candidates that are currently running for city council, and unfortunately, we won't know those results until tomorrow, so they are part of that pool as well. Now, Mayor Protem Wong and I did put together a, a process through, through, through voting that we'd like to put forward. However, if there are any disagreements or concerns with that process, you know, please feel free to bring those up or if you, if you have other thoughts on how we should go about it. So I will turn it over to Mayor Protem Wong to go over our recommended process on how to narrow down this field of candidates.
Yeah, so what, thank you, Mayor. So what JD and I discussed potentially was doing was narrowing it down to five, so we could have some fairly lengthy interviews with five, the top five individuals. And by doing that, what we would do is we would get, have a list of all of which the city clerk has prepared for us of the ten applicants. And what we would do is just vote for five and see where we are with top five and just move forward with that. If there's any ties, we can always slowly tick off, you know, position one, two, three, and four, based on the number of votes that they got. But it was relatively simple, and then it gives us the opportunity for us to see who we want to bring forward to the interview stage. So that was my suggestion to the mayor.
Are there any questions on that process or points of clarification needed? So we do have the voting slips here with the candidates' names on it, so we can do an anonymous ballot as well, so that was, that's what our hope was. And then our clerk here would tally those votes. What are, are there any other thoughts on this process and how we should go about it?
Are we just doing check marks next to the five or are we ranking now?
Just check marks?
Thank you.
And then the candidates that received. And then the candidates that received, the top five candidates that received the most check marks will move on. If there is a tie, I, I'm a little confused on that part, sorry. If there is a tie, let's say, you know, four are clearly ahead and then candidates five and six both have like three votes each. Are you okay with, might be my proposal that we move both of them along for the interview?
That we could do.
And instead of having five, we would then have six. But it's not expanding it too much, it's just one extra candidate is a tie.
How long are interviews?
Uh, that's up to us to decide.
If it's an hour each, that's six hours.
I don't think it'll, it will be an hour each. My, my thought would be there'd be about twenty minutes each with the ten minute break in between or five minutes for transitions. Twenty to thirty minutes, I would, I would say, yeah.
Because planning commission is what, fifteen, right, Jeff?
Fifteen.
League interviews, twenty with ten minutes in between.
That's what we did last time.
We, we did, yeah, we did.
I guess I'm concerned that like we're putting an arbitrary number and I don't really feel comfortable with, without having any kind of discussion about them. I mean, maybe we come to a consensus about, you know, in discussion and there's a clear, there's a clear group of, of yes and, and no. I guess I, I, I'm not comfortable with any kind of secret ballot that would be recorded and, and, and we, we don't have any process like that. We've done random drawings and things like, you know, but not, not any kind of ballot that's not disclosed or.
You mean like when we, we appoint mayor and Mayor Protem?
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's just, that's, because that's what's written in the rules and, and so I guess I wouldn't be comfortable.
So, I guess where we're coming from is.
Off the cuff doing a secret ballot.
Sure, I, I guess where we're coming from is a couple of different ways. Number one, we can discuss the candidates publicly and I'm sure the candidates wouldn't mind. You know, but then we are going to get into details like, and I, I don't mind either, but you're, we are still publicly talking about individuals, you know, potentially criticizing some folks and elevating others, so we have to be okay with that. But in addition, it's all about, for me, it's more beyond that, it's about efficiency. I think we can, we can get, we can narrow down, I would not like to do ten interviews for ten applicants. I, and I, and based off the applications that you, we read through them, there are some clear folks that we should not be interviewing.
But we don't even, we haven't even discussed though to see, I mean, maybe we come to consensus that there's, there's three for sure without even talking about it.
So, maybe we narrow it down to even fewer than that.
We don't know until we have the discussion and so.
I don't know if I have enough information to have a discussion with what I have in front of me.
I, I think that's maybe why we should have a discussion.
Well, I, I, but I don't think I have enough information here to have even that discussion, I don't know.
I.
Well, we've already defined the process to get to tonight, so, I mean, that was part of the, part of the previous meetings where the application and the process to, so.
Well, maybe we should take a poll and see where we're at.
Uh, well, let's, well, I'd love to hear from others on how you want to go about this process. We could just go, we could take, we could take five minutes to discuss, you know, how we're long, to, to discuss some of the candidates. But I think the point of this is because this is going to turn into one of our typical conversations where you have, you know, split council, arguments back and forth and then it just, it gets, it gets hectic and this is more so just a, 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 a clear and concise way to say, this is who we're interviewing and this is who we're not. I think that's where we're coming from because we can have a, for, for example, we may have a candidate two of us love, two of us hate, two of us are maybe on.
But we don't, but we don't know until we even have a discussion and I guess I'd be interested in hearing what, you know, how people approached it or thoughts and, and that conversation may, could sway where we come down to, you know, where we come down to and, I mean, maybe we, maybe everybody's got really good points and we say, wow, we really just need to bring them all in.
Uh, Councilor Barnes?
I, I would already for just open votes to bring up each name. We all vote, if we get five people that we all agree with, we're done. If not, then we do have discussion.
Okay, so you're.
I can one, one at a time.
One at a time poll, you have four votes, check, you don't have four votes, not check. If candidate gets four votes, then we interview them, if they don't get four votes, we don't interview them.
I guess I'd be interested in even a higher level discussion of just, you know, what, what, what the process was and the thoughts just even approaching it, you know, the candidates.
Oh, the selection?
Yeah, if you, you know, how to, you know, if the, if the task tonight is indeed to narrow it down to a subset of these ten, what, what kind of are your thoughts about, you know, maybe a point of view on whether or not candidates who are also on the ballot should be considered or not, you know, just kind of broader categories. I have, I've, I've always approached, I mean, I've been involved in a lot of council vacancies. We haven't had one for a while, but you know, I, I sort of had, had kind of a point of view that I've, that I've applied in all of those cases that, you know, I don't know that I would have an opportunity to share. We didn't have more of an open discussion first and maybe that would be an interesting, interesting information for others to consider.
Let's do this, if council's okay with it. I, I do like Councilor Barnes' suggestion, we just go one by one, that saves us tallying. To me, that's, that's a, that's a good efficient process, but we gotta do it, we gotta do it, right? So, Councilor Walton, let's, let's cover one thing and I think this is important to discuss in your list. I don't think we need to have a very in-depth discussion on, on just narrowing down the field. I think we can do that at the next stage, which is the interviews, when we actually select someone. And to me, this portion is just to eliminate the folks that we're not going to consider at all and the folks that are kind of up in the air, maybe we do offer them an interview. But I would like to address the issue of the candidates that are running for office. Is, you know, I'm also one of the candidates running for office, but I think that based off of that and just like just understanding what's going on, I do think some candidates might win tomorrow, right? And so, I don't want to take away someone else's interview position for someone that's going to, you know, realistically be on this council regardless. So, I would be in favor of not extending interviews to candidates David Friedland and Eric Ryan because I think that tomorrow, the election's in the voters' hands and if the voters would want these individuals on our council, then they'll let us know tomorrow.
I can go along with that.
I'm not comfortable with that.
No?
Yeah, I, I'm not comfortable with that because I think it should be the best of the best. And honestly, there's a really good group of vacant candidates for this vacancy.
Yeah.
There is a very good group.
Maybe the ones running for council.
Yes, yes, I was disappointed in that, that, you know, not, some of these people didn't put their hat in the ring for the election. So, I don't want to eliminate somebody just because they are putting money in to get, to get elected. I mean, I wouldn't do that to you or Tim.
Right.
So, I'm not going to do it to somebody else.
I don't know, yeah, that's fair. Okay, so we need to decide how we're going to go about this then. We have the voting slips here, we can use those, we can talk about them publicly.
I think we just do a poll.
Yeah, and there's, and like you said, there's, I mean, there's no, there's no set number that we have to come to.
However, I think we want to avoid doing ten interviews for sure, I don't think that's necessary at all. And folks don't deserve the interview and in addition to that, we're, we don't want, we don't need to spend, you know, an additional six hours.
I'm not advocating for just advancing all ten to interviews. I'm just saying, in your comment, the, there was something that you said, I can't remember how you worded it, but it made it sound like if they didn't make the cut and, but, but like assuming, I mean, we can just see where we are, I guess after.
Okay, let's do that, all right, let's go ahead and do that then. All right, we're going to go through one by one, you can give quick thoughts, you can give no thoughts, but you do need to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. So, we will start with, we're just going to go down the list in front of me, we'll start with Peggy Dara. Thoughts on Peggy and her application? Okay, we got some thumbs already.
She's lived, she's lived in Lafayette a long time and been active in the community, but I, there are others that I would put ahead of interviewing first.
I was looking at experience doing this type of work and I didn't think, thought maybe those are the people with more, with more experience.
But I, I do like Peggy, I know she does a lot of great work in the community in terms of organizing. She has been living in Lafayette for, for fifteen years, I think, lived the time spent in Lafayette. To me, I, I value that a lot more than I do most things. I, she's one of the candidates that I would love to hear more from through an interview to really identify what her priorities are, so I'd be in supportive of giving her an interview. But however, I'm one of, one of six. So, let's get thumbs up, thumbs down and go to the next candidate. And we need at least four, keep in mind, we need at least four, that's a majority. All right, next, we have David Friedland, he is a candidate for city council. What are our thoughts on David?
I really want to see David on council and I think he's going to win and I think there are people in this group that we can work well together with, so. I, I really want David to be here, so, and, and for him to not be appointed, because I think he's going to win.
Me too. I'll just jump in because I feel the exact same way, I think David is an excellent candidate for city council and I'm extremely confident in tomorrow's results and I think that he'll be just fine, so therefore, I'd like to leave that spot open to someone else.
Are we just voting?
We're voting, I got, unless someone wants to add anything, oh, well, we got four, four yeses. All right, great. Uh, next we have Joanne Graham, thoughts on Joanne?
So, you, if you read her description, you might think I might know her, I do.
I do.
I was expecting you to say it, I don't.
Oh, yeah, no, I do, I was kind of, I kind of giggled myself, I'm like, oh my gosh, she's better qualified for this than I am. So, I, I'm just a hearty thumbs up from here because I, I think she could really do some amazing things. She's incredible, project manager, manager of people person, she loves the city and I was really hoping that she would get into city government, so.
It's fascinating through this process, whether it's been a council vacancy or planning commission or boards and commissions or knocking on doors on Lafayette, the people, this community. It just, there are just amazing gems that come out of the woodwork through some of the process and there are a lot of people that I wish stepped forward more. I felt the same way, there are several candidates that, gosh, put your name on the ballot, please. Yeah, and it's just completely circumstantial, right, that we're doing this, it, you know, that's on top of, of an election. I'm very interested in interviewing Joanne. I, I like that she's lived a long time in Lafayette, I like her experience. I got a glimpse that she has some understanding of the, of the issues facing Lafayette and I think her perspective would be an interesting addition. I'd like to hear more from her.
Uh, any other thoughts, otherwise we'll take quick consensus. All right, thumbs up, thumbs down on Joanne? All right, what do you have for? Next, we have Riley Heger. Thoughts on Riley?
Uh, I guess I'll start. I, I really do, did like Riley's application, I thought it was the most, you know, thorough out of all the ones we received. It was really well done, life, like I'll, just like, you know, myself and Councilor Matrono, you know, lifelong Lafayette resident, a lot of experience, highly educated, a lot of experience working with federal government. Ideas might, might need some, you know, catching up on our current city issues, I could see that, but I don't think that's anything that's not, you can over, that's, that's something that she can overcome through her hard work and through her governance experience, so I would be supportive of moving it forward.
I would too, I think I've got the, I've got twenty somethings in my life who want to see younger people in government and I was really impressed by her application, I'd like to hear more.
Any other thoughts? All right, thumbs up, thumbs down, what are we thinking? Great, all right, that's unanimous there. Okay, next we have Frank Phillips. Thoughts on Frank and Frank, you know, as, as we're familiar with, but for the public, Frank is a former member of city council and former mayor here in Lafayette, so he does have that experience and so, you know, but thoughts on the application and if, you know, it's kind of a double edged sword, right? Having someone like Frank is, you know, someone that provides the experience and, and being on council, but at the same time, you know, we, you think about, do we want to give that opportunity to someone new, someone who hasn't sat on council before, you know, just give someone else the opportunity. So, what, what are council thoughts on Frank, go ahead?
So, this is, as I was saying kind of at the beginning, I mean, this is where I felt strongly and been consistent through the council vacancies with one exception and that is where, when we've had previously elected people apply for a council vacancy, I felt strongly that it needs to really be up to the people, whether or not they should be back on city council. I'd rather see people like Frank, if they're interested, to put their name on the ballot and be elected again after, you know, sitting out for, for, I think a rule is up to four years after they've completed their term or been term limited. So, that's the only exception where that's come into play and we have interviewed previous city council members for vacancies, but the, the only exception was when we had a short-term vacancy with the resignation of Mayor Berg and needed to fill that position. I think it ended up being for eight months and, and we, we, we had Carolyn Cutler, former mayor, come in. That was really to benefit the fact that we were, had a new city administrator coming on board. We wanted somebody to, that could fill in for a short amount of time and, and really kind of hit the ground running. The benefit that, you know, any other, anybody that we nominate or, I mean, whoever we fill with this vacancy has the opportunity of being new with another batch of new people too, so that will, that'll be, that'll be helpful. They'll be one of several coming up to speed on things. But I, I would, I would not support moving Frank forward. I also appreciate his service on, on the planning commission and the, the work that they're doing on the code rewrite.
All right, thank you, other thoughts on Frank, Councilor Barnes?
Uh, I'd just like to say that I feel similar as Councilor Walton in that I really, really, really do appreciate people's service and having, I, I'm in favor of people doing multiple, influencing the city in multiple ways and I think where Frank is, I really appreciate his expertise, having been on council, being there. So, I would, I would move him forward in this, so that we can bring in new people to keep more residents having the opportunity to experience this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thoughts on Frank? Can you flip them down with, like, in that, so, I would just say, I think Frank, he's been nothing but kind to me and we have a good relationship and I think he does a good job on our planning commission. He has served his time on council and he has done it in the position as mayor and in other capacities, very involved with the school district in other ways. I think he's a great contributor to this community and however, I do feel like I, I would like to give someone new an opportunity that's never been on council before or, or is seeking that opportunity to, to be in these seats. So, that's the only, that's the only reason I, I would not move forward with Frank, but I, and I, and I do think he does a good job on our planning commission already and I don't want to replace that seat too. We've replaced a hundred seats already.
Question, are we voting for five or we're voting for as many as we?
As many as we can, but if it, if it gets crazy, we're going to have to narrow down. But right now, we have, we do have.
So, we can't vote, I, I just want to make sure I was thinking.
Okay, cool. And, and one of our candidates might drop out because they'll get elected tomorrow. Have the interview process. Alright, thumbs up, thumbs down on Frank? Alright, so, alright, next we have.
What was the result?
Oh, sorry, that's, no. Uh, so right now we have three. We have David, Joanne, and Riley. Okay, we have Annette Roush. Thoughts on Annette's application?
I am interested in interviewing Annette. I want to hear more from her. I liked her application. I'd like to, I'd like to hear more from all of the candidates. You know, you mentioned, Brian, the wanting more information. We can kind of talk about maybe the process a little bit or what kind of questions. I think that I'm really interested to hear more about, um, the, um, the priorities that, that face council and, um, I don't know, I've got to get that, give that more thought on kind of some of the, the questions that we asked to get it, to get at that more pointedly, but, um, Annette's one that I had on my list, so I'd like to hear more from.
Other thoughts on Annette? Otherwise we can take a poll. Go ahead, Councilor Barnes.
Um, actually, um, Annette, just happened to meet Annette over the weekend in a different place and I was super impressed with the fact that she, one of the issues, I've been still trying to remember which issue it was, but there was something that we've been discussing that, you know, I'm concerned that it might be challenging to broaden the perspective of the things we have to deal with. And she brought up something that, you know, she's paying attention, I guess, to the things that we discuss. So I don't know her that well, but, um, I just be interested in hearing, um, in an interview. So I don't, I don't think she's, I think she's informed and paying attention to what we're doing, so.
I think there's definitely a tier breaking between applications and I think Annette's was done really well. So I would like to hear from, more from her as well. Alright, thumbs up, thumbs down on Annette? We need at least four, so. Four right there. Okay. Great, that's four for Annette. So we'll move forward with the interview for her. Alright, next we have Eric Wright. Thoughts on Eric's application?
I think we heard of that already today.
We did. It was fairly short, so, and he is a candidate for council. So because of the application and because of his candidacy for council, I would, I would not be in support of extending an interview. Thoughts with council? Okay, let's take a vote. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, so it looks like we're, oh, sorry, not a vote, a consensus, a check-in, a general check-in.
Check-in.
Alright, uh, so not, okay, so not going to move forward with the interview for that. Alright, next is Jonathan Shury. Jonathan Shury, thoughts on Jonathan? To me, it's the same vote as the last candidate. Uh, wasn't enough information there. Seems, you know, like an active member that wants to contribute. Uh, I would recommend Jonathan for, uh, city board or commission. I think council might be too quickly, too soon.
I agree that, you know, there was just really, what I, the note that I wrote as I was reviewing them the other day was just really only mentioning growth. There's so many other things as well, so kind of not enough.
Okay, other thoughts? Alright, thumbs up, thumbs down on Jonathan? Okay, uh, so not be interviewing Jonathan. Alright, next we have Saul. Thoughts on Saul's application?
I'd like to interview him. Um, I know he's just recently joined HRC, so we had the benefit actually of having a little more information, um, for him than just the application, since we recently have seen, um, a more in-depth questionnaire and, and resume and whatnot. I, I'd love to, um, move forward in that interview process. I want to hear more about, um, I guess kind of the same, the same comments and, and the same thoughts, um, as I, where I was for Annette when I commented on Annette. Kind of wanted to just hear more about what the priorities for Lafayette and kind of dig into some of the, some meatier interview questions to hear more. But I like what he has to offer.
Other thoughts, Councilor Barnes?
I, I don't, I like the reference to being a culture broker and listening because it's, um, a lot of this is about really hearing what people have to say. I thought it'd be interesting in, in the view of all.
Yeah, me too. I thought the application was very well done. I thought the experience of the government experience, combination with, uh, the growing, you know, growing up here in Lafayette, understanding, uh, you know, our role as council, I think will come easy to him and I would love to interview him as well. So let's do a quick thumbs up, thumbs down on Saul. Cool, we got unanimous there. Awesome. And finally, our last candidate is Richard Welty. And just so council is where right now, we're sitting at, we're sitting at five. However, uh, once again, one of those candidates is David Friedland, who once again will likely win tomorrow, but it's not guaranteed. It's not guaranteed. Okay, uh, thoughts on Richard's application? Uh, Councilor Walton?
I appreciate, um, this candidate's, um, application. He has run for city council. He has previously applied for vacancies as well. I guess I would, um, I really saw kind of a business leaning toward that. Well, you know, that is a lens that we should be considering in, in many different policy things we do. Felt a little limited based on, um, all of the activities we do. I'd like to see this person, you know, get involved in the city. He continue, he continues to show interest, but I guess I'd be interested in, um, you know, seeing him put his name on the ballot. Why not run again if, if you're interested?
And I will say, so, I do have some information on that. So he was going to put himself on the last ballot, but due to a health condition that he's gone through treatment for, that's why it did not happen that he did not run for this last time. It was his intention to run, but due to, um, advice, medical advice, he chose not to at that point in time. And since then, the treatments have progressed and it's showing a good prob, no, so just a little bit of information on that from Richard.
Alright, um, other thoughts on, on Richard's application, council? I, I would be in supportive of interviewing Richard. I think that, um, he has, of course, applied for vacancies in the past and he was really, like, really well done, uh, those interviews. He did really well and unfortunately he was going against, you know, former mayor and Councilor Sampson over here. So those are, those are tough, you know, those are, those are tough to be. And I think that he, uh, brings a perspective, I, well, regardless of all of that. Like, I think that he's someone that's involved in the community, does a lot of good work. But based on the application alone, I think that, um, you know, he's really expressed, um, his, his ability to be involved, regardless of if, if it's in office or not. And so that goes a long way for me and I would be supportive of interviewing. Any other thoughts before we take a, a poll? Alright, let's go, thumbs up, thumbs down on Richard? Alright, that's, looks like that's five. Awesome. Okay, so we have narrowed it down to six candidates to interview. Those candidates are David Friedland, Joanne Graham, Riley Hager, Annette Roush, Saul Tapia Vega, and Richard Welty. And we'll work with staff hopefully to check in with those candidates to see if they are still interested in interviewing for a week from today, on the thirteenth.
I imagine the city attorney will say this, but you need a motion.
Oh, we do need a motion. I forget. Let's do that first.
So, I moved that we move forward with interviewing David Friedland, Joanne Graham, Riley Hager, Annette Roush, Saul Tapia Vega, and Richard Welty for the vacant council seat.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, we'll turn it over to city attorney to explain the next steps.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you're asking for next step with your council appointment process?
I'm sorry, what was that?
That, so I wanted to clarify, what were you asking for next steps on?
Oh, I was just, um, so we, we, we narrowed it down to six finalists and so we just want to make sure staff is in touch with them to make sure we schedule them for November the thirteenth, Monday evening. Uh, we'll be conducting six interviews, potentially six interviews.
Okay, so, uh, that meeting has been called earlier this evening and so I think if, it would be a good idea during this meeting, if council's able to take a few minutes to discuss the process you intend to use for the interviews, just because this is your last meeting before the meeting on the thirteenth when you'll be interviewing them. And by that, I mean council might want to discuss briefly how you will determine what questions you will ask the interviewees as well as how you'll determine the order, whether, uh, you'll want the interviewees to come in at certain times or whether they will all be in the room while you're doing the interview. So I would just suggest to council that you discuss some of those logistics briefly tonight, since this will be your last opportunity before that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, alright, so let's go ahead and do that. You know, our interviews are scheduled for November the thirteenth, that evening. I would propose that, uh, so I would propose that we schedule interview times for thirty minute blocks. We'll leave twenty minutes for questions and answers, as well as an additional ten minutes to see if the candidate has any questions for us, as well as to transition from candidate to candidate. I think that would run smoothly if we do it that way.
So one hour per candidate?
Thirty minutes per candidate.
Oh, you said thirty and then twenty and then ten?
This is a total of thirty minutes, twenty of those minutes being the interview and ten of those minutes being question slash transition. Um, is council okay with that timing? Do, I feel like that's, that's a good, that's enough time?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and then, um, in terms of, you know, uh, the questions for the interview, I can go ahead and pull the questions from the last couple vacancies and email out those to council and then we can decide how you want to shorten it. I do think, you know, twen, ten questions, that's too many. Three questions, that's not enough. So somewhere in that range of, you know, five to eight, I think, is ideal for this style of interview. But what I can do is I can send those to council and I would need your response fairly quickly. I can send those tomorrow. And then I would, I would need your response, uh, what is going on with schedule? I would need your response if it's in tomorrow by, by Thursday. And that way, you know, we can have that set, those set questions ready and you let me know if you, if there's any you want to remove, if there's any you want to add or change. Um, and then we can have whatever is consensus amongst council. We can use those five to eight questions in our interview.
Eight's gonna be too many.
Eight's probably a lot.
And so we have, um, so we're gonna do all of the, stack the interviews first on the agenda and then public input will be immediately following the final interview?
Correct.
Okay. Um, are we, um, are we going to, uh, are we gonna? Yeah, okay.
Okay. What time do we start next? At five thirty?
Five thirty.
We, we would have to begin at five thirty and with six candidates, likely five, we'll have.
Will be done at eight thirty.
Will be done around eight thirty. Um, then we do have to take a chance to make the decision, so that may take some time.
We have to do public input at eight thirty.
And then make, like, the, the discussion on who to appoint. That, that could be easy or that could be a longer conversation, but it'll be around eight, oh, around nine. Before nine ideally we'd be done, which is ideally. Yeah, which is fine. That works.
And then are we planning to seat the counselor that, the, doesn't need that night?
So we'll, we'll make the announcement that night, but the counselor will need to sign the oath of office with our city clerk here that the municipal judge does not need to be present for that. We just do that more ceremonially. And because of the city manager appointment and all the other craziness we have going on, you know, maybe we might advise that, that, uh, the, the, the individual we select to come to city hall the following day, get sworn in so that they can participate in the city administrative process. However, if the candidate doesn't want to be involved in that, then, you know, that's, that's up to them. But if they do, and they do want to say in that, that, that decision that we make, that they would need to be sworn into office the following day. And they can bring their family, you know, to city hall, whatever works for them. But it'll be something, it'll, it will, it'll be less, you know, of a ceremony than what we traditionally do.
Maybe what you ought to say is, when is the last day somebody could get sworn in? So, so they got some time instead of, you must come in the next day. What's the last day?
With the forty-five days.
Mary Lynn?
Mayor, it would need to be no later than ten days after their appointment.
Okay, so the twenty-third, Thanksgiving Day.
Uh, that's correct.
Not on Thanksgiving Day.
Before Thanksgiving, they're coming.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's up to the candidate, right? I think we give them that, that is, that, the ability to decide if they want to be a part of the administrator process and they'll, they'll know that, you know, the sixteenth is when we're gonna, the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth is when we're gonna do all the, all the fun stuff, so.
It might be good to, um, who's gonna notify these six?
Clerk Beck, can you work on that?
It may be good to just let them know that, be thinking or block the days and so they have an idea.
Yeah, hopefully they're already aware. Never know. Okay.
I just wanted to, um, mention the, um, the process. I, um, I didn't pay as close attention to the questions that were gonna be asked and sort of what we were gonna have to, to get to tonight. And so I would be, it, it was almost surprising that we have less information for the city vacancy question, question, or, um, applications that we got than we have for boards and commissions. So I just wondered if maybe, um, the next time we, um, have a vacancy that we maybe kind of have a more robust, um, list of questions or for consideration. And, uh, and maybe even, you know, I don't know if it would be appropriate. It seems like having the resumes is helpful. So we have a little bit more information. And, uh, and that, just to, yeah, I guess have more.
Okay, yeah, that's something we can definitely consider.
Feel like attached by resume.
Resume. And I do think it was fairly short too. I think three questions wasn't enough. I would love to have seen more. But we could have, you know, there, it's just, it's a, is a very difficult time for us as a council right now. But that's definitely something that we should consider for the next, for sure. Okay, any other thoughts on this? We did pass a motion, so I think we're all good. We did lay out the process. Uh, city attorney, anything else? Do you think, I think we're good to go on?
I think you're good to go, yes.
Please. Alright, well, thank you so much for all the applicants. And if you didn't receive an interview, we highly encourage you to join one of our many vacancies on our city boards and commissions. That's a great way to get your foot in the door and a great way, um, to build your experience, uh, to be a part of, uh, the city council here. Alright, well, we do have an appointment, uh, to the planning commission and zoning board of adjustments. This is item Q. Uh, Councilor Barnes, Councilor Walton, and myself had the opportunity to meet with our, our one applicant, Fatima Haraj, the other. Uh, I don't know how to pronounce her last name and someone needs to correct me. So we'll make sure we, we understand, uh, how to pronounce that as, as, as she gets onboarded here. And I think that, you know, Fatima had a solid interview. There were, you know, us, multiple staff members that were present, uh, members of the public. And, uh, just, do Councilor Barnes or Councilor Walton, do you want to mention anything?
I guess I just wanted to say one thing. I appreciated her reapplying and coming back, um, Um, I, uh, appreciated, um, her reapplying and coming back, um, for consideration. Um, she, we gave her an opportunity to ask questions of us after we asked her, um, the, our, our questions. And, um, she specifically was, uh, even though she had addressed some of the, um, items that we had talked about publicly in regard to her previous, um, consideration for Planning Commission, um, she pointedly asked some questions and, and asked for clarification. She was very interested if, if we had any reservations. Um, because I was also on that interview panel, um, I came prepared, um, without her even asking the question I was gonna share, that I did not have any reservations. Um, so I really appreciated that we had that, um, that opportunity, that she was really open to hearing more. Um, and I have, uh, I have appreciated specifically her interest and her staying active, um, since she has moved to Lafayette and since we interviewed her, um, and considered her for the first, uh, for the first round. So I, um, I definitely, um, support without hesitation her, um, appointment to Planning Commission.
Uh, anything for your casters?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to echo everything Councilor Walton said. And I'd be honest, I didn't see the initial interview, but I, when she applied initially, I did think that her appointment would provide a broader vision that I would be, uh, good, a good addition to a commission. Because you don't want everyone, I don't want everyone thinking the same way or coming from the same background. I'd like to have lots of different perspectives, and I thought she brought a good perspective. And that she did allude to what happens when you don't agree with other people, you know, in your group. What do you do at that point? And I, I thought that was a very, um, knowing question that I'm not sure that she would have asked a year ago. And I've even just seeing her in that situation, I got the sense that Councilor Walton can confirm that there was some more growth in, an investment in Lafayette. And I think it's a, a win-win in that we get a broader perspective and someone with an understanding of the process and how it works. And, um, will add value, so I wholly support her appointment to Planning Commission.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and make the motion then, if that's okay with, with council. Um, let's see. Uh, so I'll move, uh, to appoint, uh, Fatima Hiergi to the Planning Commission for a full four-year term ending in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, as an alternate to the Board of, and, and as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are on to staff for, oh, I apologize. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, there's one more part of that motion that we need to get, the alternative up to the full member of the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so, yeah, the city staff, if you're, yeah, if you see in the packets, staff also recommend, so city council to elevate Mark Ortiz to a full member of the, uh, Zoning Board of Adjustment from his current position as an alternate. Fatima would replace him as the alternate. So, uh, I will make a motion. Uh, oh. Did someone say something?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just not with you.
Okay, so if you take a look at, uh, page five-seventeen.
I know, but we just spent a lot of time talking about somebody to be an alternate, and we haven't talked at all about the person they're moving up to.
Alternate to the, to the Board of Adjust, Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Mm, okay.
So she'll, she's full-time member of Planning Commission.
Okay.
But to the Board of Adjustment will be an alternate. And then.
Cause they have less numbers than the Planning Commission?
I thought they were the senior.
Yeah.
That they were one of the top.
When we, when we did this kind of making the Planning Commission the Board of Adjustment, we didn't make any code changes. So the Board of Adjustment has, uh, I think five or four full-time members and three alternatives. And so what we, what we've done is the most senior positions on the Planning Commission are full
Adjustments.
Board of Adjustment members, and then the junior are the most recent appointments or the alternatives. And so when we have turnover on the Planning Commission, we need to adjust everybody up, up the ladder a little bit. And so Mark Ortiz is the full Planning Commissioner, um, who is currently an alternative to the Board of Adjustment. Um, the previous, uh, Commissioner who is, uh, who's no longer on the board was a full member of the Board of Adjustment. So Mark moves into the full mem, Board of Adjustment member, and then Fatima would be an alternative on the Board of Adjustment. That's what we're proposing on that, so.
Thank you for the, for the clarification.
Has Mark been, uh, regularly attending meetings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Second.
Oh, allow, let me make the motion first. Um, I'll make a, I'll make a motion, um, uh, to elevate Mark Ortiz to a full member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment from his current alternate position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cool. Uh, all right, now we're on to staff reports, uh, beginning with the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do just have, uh, more than anything, a brief kudos for your staff that I wanted to share tonight. Um, obviously, the council knows, uh, why I was not able to be there in person tonight, so thank you for the opportunity to attend remotely. However, I did want to point out that this is the right, the first regular council meeting where you've been able to have a video, uh, connection from a remote attender. So, uh, I just wanted to point that out and give kudos to your information technology staff at the city for making this happen tonight. Um, I know we've had remote attendance at council meetings in the past, but not, uh, with video connection, just with an audio connection. So anyway, council, I just wanted to let you know, it's gone very smoothly from my end and, uh, wanted to give all the credit to your IT staff at the city, um, for accommodating my need to attend remotely tonight. And I'm grateful that I was able to participate by video as well. So, thank you, council. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'm glad it's, uh, it's, it's an option available for us now. Okay, uh, city administrators' report.
Thank you. I was gonna mention something similar. So we're working on the kinks. We know some of the sound. Um, but we are really excited that both, um, staff, council, or the community can participate in Zoom, see the meeting, and we can see that, which was requested a while ago, especially in light of COVID. And then I'd also be remiss to apologize for my voice. I've been taken down by a two-and-a-half-year-old germs. Um, so bear with me here. Um, so tonight, um, I really wanted to focus, um, a little bit longer on our recent employee appreciation event. So on November first, we hosted an inaugural employee appreciation event at Nisi's. I believe we had over a hundred and fifty of our staff members able to attend, which was amazing. And we got to celebrate our employees that hit major years of service and announce the nominees for our core value awards. And just as a reminder, the core values were developed, there's five of them developed a couple of years ago, led by staff. And this year, we had our employees nominate each other for how they, um, embody our core values. And so we had over fifty-two nominations with eighty-five employees being nominated, a lot of them multiple times. Um, and we had a few, um, entire departments nominated as well. So it was really exciting to see kind of this take off the first year. So I wanted to briefly go over and publicly acknowledge the, um, winners of each category and share a little bit about them. So in accountability, Rosa Pizzo is our payroll specialist. She is a one-woman show, and as many of you guys know, we do not have an automated system right now. So this is all done via spreadsheets every two weeks. We have a union, we have police, we have on-call times. And for her to get this done every two weeks is pretty enormous feat, and so we really wanted to appreciate her for that. Our information technology team as well, I mean, you just heard an example of it, right? These are folks that, um, several years ago, we were hit by a cyber attack, and they have revolutionized our security systems. They've implemented new technologies and are really, um, advancing our customer service across organizations so that they're a trusted partner. And so even if you feel like you made a mistake or you accidentally opened something, our staff are going to them right away versus trying to hack it. Under community focus, um, you all know, uh, manager Zora, Lizzie. Uh, she was nominated, again, one of those multiple times for all of the work she does, um, internally. But a lot of with, um, the events that she's been hosting and kind of enhancing our sustainability, uh, lens throughout the county, and is kind of a well-known resource throughout the state. Our code update team, this was a really unique project that spanned multiple departments. So we have public works, planning and building, fire, and finance, and sustainability, all in this. These are the folks that really helped put our ADUs and our short-term rentals code programs together and, um, were acknowledged for the work that they did on those. Um, for innovation, so Lexi Bullock's our fitness program manager. One of the really unique things that she did this past year, if you go into the rec center, we had two very, uh, underutilized, um, not pickleball, what's the other one?
Rec.
Um, courts.
Racquetball.
Racquetball, thank you. Racquetball courts. And we also had a bunch of staff, or like patrons, that were basically working out in a hallway. And so she used data, she worked with the racquetball community, and was able to convert one of those spaces into, um, a flexible workout space that is utilized very heavily now and allows our patrons not to be necessarily in the exit pathways or underneath the stairwells. Our water treatment team, again, um, with new leadership, has really revolutionized and enhanced the technology that we're using. If you recall, during our budget presentation, we, um, put forward kind of a reservoir monitoring system that uses sonic waves versus chemicals to help treat algae. And that's just one example of how they've been able to kind of up the game to ensure our water treatment, um, is of high quality. Within integrity, Matt Espinoza is a maintenance, open space maintenance that's been with the city for over twenty years. You know, his team shares that he's the first one in and the last one out to leave, and is really dedicated to the maintenance of our open space. And always goes above and beyond, both for staff and for the community. Our detective team, um, has really utilized a lot of new technologies. They've been recognized kind of throughout the state and the country for some of our high-profile cases and the way they, they handle it with professionalism and consistency. And then within teamwork, um, Susan Barker, we all know her. She is, despite being the deputy city clerk, um, a person to all people. She's the first person that we'll go to, to dig up some history on something that happened in the past. She helps support council and a lot of the other boards, including Laura. And then our libraries and programs engagement team. Um, this team was actually nominated in three different categories. They are a team that works with, you know, twenty-three thousand different patrons, have really enhanced the programs that we offer, and are just a great team that have worked really well together. And then not really announced to our, um, community, or our, um, employees, but as I was going through the awards, there was one person that got a lot of awards and really stood out to be that person that embodies our entire five values. And so it was a surprise to announce Jenny Conlin, who's our public works administrator and financial manager. But we really felt like, as the team, um, reviewed the applications, that, you know what? Like, I think we should have a core value champion as well. So it was a amazing program. Um, it's not really my forte to have all these pictures up there, but it was really to show kind of the excitement of our employees. I'll be sending around kind of the presentation that we did, um, to council, just as FYI. The nominees did little videos for the applicants, and it was really nice to see. And then, um, we now have placards kind of upstairs, if you wander the building, that, uh, will be highlighting each year the different, um, awardees.
Wow, nice.
Yeah. Um, moving to kind of regular business, our look ahead, as we've noted several times. November thirteenth, you will have your special meeting to interview, um, the now appointments for council vacancy. And November fourteenth through sixteenth will be the city administrator interviews. November twenty-first, um, we will be inviting those that are up for recipients for the Mental Health and Human Services Awards. We will also be having several discussions on kind of high-profile items that I really wanted this council to help provide some direction on, including, um, some concerns around the pickleball courts at Wannacook Lake, uh, the discussion on the cemetery plaque, and then a discussion on the Lafayette Cultural Advisory Commission and the public arts. That's all I have now.
Did, Councilor Walton?
Um, I was wondering, um, if there were any, um, public, um, planning commission development projects that were going to be on our November twenty-first agenda?
I do not believe there are any at this point in time.
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you so much for your part. Uh, we can move forward with council reports now. Councilor Sampson?
No.
Uh, Mayor Portem.
Couple of quick announcements, um, just to follow up. With high school marching band season coming to an end, just want to recognize Centaurus High School being number one in the four-A division for the state of Colorado, um, in the marching band, and also recognize Monarch High School, who came in number two. Um, cause we have a number of residents, actually. I didn't realize how many residents. Number two, um, in, in the statewide championship. So congratulations to them, and I believe also Centaurus's soccer team is moving on to the next level in competition.
Yeah, that was an intense game they scored.
Yes.
And they were down zero to one, scored two goals in like a minute, and came back one.
Really exciting. So congratulations to all those involved.
Thank you. Councilor Walton?
Thank you. Um, I'm sending an email to, um, uh, staff about my suggestions on the transition for Colorado Seven Coalition meeting. Um, and just, um, as I'm rolling off these boards and commissions, I'm definitely, um, providing kind of some notes from a transition standpoint. Um, and, uh, so just wanted to kind of let you all know that I'm thinking, um, thinking like that and sharing information so that, um, as those appointments are made, it's clear and updates are made in terms of when the meetings are, if they're in person, where they are, um, and, and whatnot. The, um, I really appreciate the, um, comments and feedback that I've received regarding the Senior Advisory Board Workshop. Um, they have, um, um, but their final meeting for the year, um, is next week, so I'll be attending that, meeting and talking to them, um, about any thoughts that they had. There were two members that were able to join us in person, and, and hopefully the other two will, um, have the opportunity to watch the workshop. But, um, hopefully it was informative, um, for you. Um, and, um, one of the things I'm gonna talk to them about, or that's on their agenda, is sort of what their twenty, twenty-four goals are. Um, and so that, um, knowing that kind of their, um, the, the continued conversation that there may be about the powers and duties section of their bylaws, um, you know, there might be some fu- future input on that. Um, I, um, I think for the one thing that they have recommended continue is, you know, having an active strategic plan for that. So I'm going to, um, talk to them and, and hope, and I think that during that conversation of what their goals will be, you know, will be, can kind of be focused on, on that part of it. So, um, so that, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you all, um, for that discussion. And, I should have written them all down. Um, I think that's it. The other item is being, I've, I've communicated to staff, details on, on the other items, so I'll let staff take it from there. Thank you.
Councilor Maggiano?
In our reports tonight, Mayor, I've just been thinking a lot about Councilor Briggs and, um, just want to kind of just keep her family in thoughts, especially as the holidays roll around and just so we continue to honor her in all that we do and, um, continue the legacy that she left here, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, I, I alluded to a study that I didn't have a chance to share with you that is happening. I don't know if, uh, everyone in council is aware of the South Boulder Road study that's going on. Um, it, there's a Dr. Cogman, you know the Dr. It's Dr. Cogman's driving the study.
Tell me more.
Okay. Right. So strangely enough, um, a Louisville resident sent me an email and said, uh, do you want to be on this South Boulder Road study? So Dr. Cog is initiating a long-term study for ways to improve transportation along South Boulder Road, starting at like Warhead in Boulder and ending with South Public Road in Lafayette. And I, I had a chance to sit in on the Zoom, and luckily, um, Director Keating was there, who needed to be there because of the impact of where, where that's gonna flow right into the lower zone. But they're looking at ways to improve, uh, transportation along that corridor. And there are rights of way, uh, in Boulder County, it's like a hundred and twenty feet, but there's a portion in Boulder where it's. but there's a portion in Boulder where it's only sixty feet of, uh, right of way. So it'll be, and, and they, and they want participants from, uh, multiple areas to, um, contribute. And many of the people didn't seem to be residents. There was, I think it was one of the only councillors on. So it was interesting to see that the study is looking at ways to improve. And they're aware of the other studies that are going on, but we, we weren't informed about that. And luckily, I got to sit in and chat for a little bit. But it's, it's a steering committee that will comment on things to consider along the way. So I think they'll be aware of our multimodal transportation plan. Uh, I don't know if others of you want to sit in on this steering, uh, on the meetings. There's only six of them. You've had one, uh, just to determine what it is they, Nora Kern is the contact at Doc, at Dr. Cog, who's doing this. And just maybe so we can get some input because they're, they're looking at a significant part of Lafayette in this and the connectivity, how it maps in conjunction with our multimodal transportation plan, I think might be good for us to know. So I, I plan to sit in on these meetings, but I just wanted to let everyone know that these are happening if anyone else wants to, uh, find out more about what's being proposed in this study.
Are you going to send the link or?
I can send the link, yes.
That'd be great.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, go on.
Um, I was wondering, um, was the, were there, um, is there a staff component or a technical, a technical committee?
Uh.
Going on either simultaneously or as part of the group that you?
I think there's a technical committee. Um, I didn't hear mention of that when I was there, but I think they, it was the initial meeting. So I think they're going to break out to smaller, uh, topic areas along the way. So like, I can ask if there is a technical.
I'll just share that, um, it was intended when we were doing, um, the planning for the improvements from, um, along South Boulder Road, from Public Road going east, um, to, what would that be? Hundred and eleventh, hundred and twentieth over there? Um, that, that at the point, um, those improvements were made, you know, it's the, it's the multi-prong, three-prong approach, um, for traffic going westbound on Highway seven, that some be diverted south to South Boulder Road and some be diverted north, um, to Arapahoe. And, um, so for the South Boulder Road portion of it, in those improvements, it was intended that, knowing that that would be pushing more traffic to South Boulder Road, there were concerns as, as that traffic goes through Lafayette during peak periods that we're conscious about safe crossings for, um, for schools. So we addressed that in that portion. But then also, um, you know, wanting, wanting it to be utilized and there still be flow. And so the city administrator said at the time that when that project gets completed, there were, there would certainly be follow-up and conversation with, um, a study to make sure that streetlights are timed in that area all the way through to Boulder. And I just am sharing that because it sounds like this might be a good group to mention that and remind it again. And just since I'm rolling off, that was, there was sort of some intentions there. And, uh, seems like a lot of competing interests to make all of that happen. But, um, but certainly, um, you know, if anybody is not going to choose to go, to not go through baseline and go down to South Boulder Road, if they're doing it because it's faster, how, and, and the flow could be better, but still safe, how can, how can all of that be achieved? So, um, that, um, I just wanted to share that out loud so that you all heard that, especially if you're talking to people about that particular section.
Thank you. Anything else, councillor Walts?
I know.
Thanks. Uh, and so for me, I had a few things. Um, number one, I just forwarded you all an email for the Commuting Solutions Annual Legislative Breakfast. Um, that will take place on January 9th in Boulder at the Glenn Miller Ballroom. So just take a look at your email if you're interested. Unfortunately, their early bird sale ends, I believe, this Friday. So if you want to go, uh, you know, we'd love to have your RSVP by Friday, um, so we can get those tickets purchased.
Don't we usually do a table there?
Oh, did you want to do a, I don't, uh, well, I would like to gauge interest first. It is not until January 9th.
And it's at what time?
It is, I apologize, from 7:45 to 9:45 AM. It's a Tuesday in the morning.
I'm a morning person. I just happen to be dropping a kid off and Tuesdays are a crazy day, yeah.
Um.
It used to be, it usually used to be at the aloft in Broome Field.
Yeah, it's in, it's in Boulder at the Glenn Miller Ballroom this year.